Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newington Town Council regular meeting of Thursday, September 29th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. If you would please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item this evening is our roll call, if you would please.
Yeah, Counselor Braverman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bud Draco?
Here.
Counselor Camillo?
Here.
Counselor Donahue?
Here.
Counselor Manke?
Here.
Counselor Nagel?
Here.
Counselor Page?
Here.
Counselor Radna?
Here.
Get confusing.
Mayor Delbiuno?
Here.
How's it going, ladies?
We do, if anyone on the TV is hearing a little bit of an echo, we have quite a large crowd here. And to accommodate that, we have a TV in the hallway on to make sure that everyone is at least having access to the meeting, able to participate if they'd like to come in. So you may hear an echo, so we apologize for that, but we're trying to make it as accessible as possible. All right, next item this evening is approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Manke, second of my Counselor Rad, any discussion? I'll open my window, sorry, guys, hold on one sec. All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, we have our agenda for this evening. And the first item this evening is awards and proclamations. And we have the pleasure this evening of having Jennifer Rodriguez with us, who is our Teacher of the Year for Newington. So I'm going to come around and use the microphone out there to present her with this proclamation. Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation into the record first, and then we'll take a vote, and we're going to have Ms. Rodriguez come up. Proclamation, whereas Mrs. Jennifer P. Rodriguez, a first grade teacher at Anna Reynolds Elementary School, has been designated as Newington's 2022-2023 Teacher of the Year. And whereas, Mrs. Rodriguez has been teaching in Newington since 2008 and was selected based upon her exceptional skills and dedication to children and the teaching profession. She values the ideals of teamwork, she is strong, intelligent, a strong community, I'm sorry, she is intelligent, a strong communicator, an advocate for all students, and a strong believer that all students deserve an equitable educational experience. She is an individual who is poised and articulate with an outgoing nature. She possesses the superior ability to inspire learning in all students. And whereas, Mrs. Rodriguez will represent the town of Newington in the Connecticut Teacher of the Year Program as a top four finalist. And whereas, Mrs. Rodriguez is a graduate of the University of St. Joseph with a Master of Arts in Education with a major in reading language elementary. She is also working on her sixth year degree with a major in reading language elementary. And whereas, Mrs. Rodriguez focuses on providing an equitable education to all students. She believes that honoring, celebrating, representing, and lifting up diverse voices leads to better learning and societal outcomes. Learners develop better critical thinking skills and social awareness amongst themselves and their peers. And most importantly, when we take an inclusive and responsive approach to diversity, it enriches learning for all while dispelling biases, end quote. And whereas, Dr. Maureen Brummett, Superintendent of Schools, indicated, quote, "Jennifer's passion for her work, ability to inspire student learning, commitment, enthusiasm, and deep compassion for her school community strongly support her selection as Newington's Teacher of the Year", end quote. And now therefore be it resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby recognizes Mrs. Jennifer P. Rodriguez as Newington's Teacher of the Year and extends its sincere congratulations and appreciation for her dedication and commitment to Newington's children. Dated in Newington, Connecticut, this 29th day of September, 2022, signed Beth Delbiuno, Mayor, on behalf of the Newington Town Council. Take a vote really quick, just to make it official, how's that? Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second of my Counselor Manke, any discussion counselors?
Thank you, Mayor, I would just say thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, very much. You represent the best of your profession, and this has been, more than I can understand, difficult beyond belief over the last few years especially. And not only to teach students, but to love them and keep them safe and reassured, and to support their families too by extension. So thank you for everything you've done, we truly appreciate it.
Counselor Manke?
Yeah, as a father of a teacher, I can, I well sympathize with the work that goes into teaching. It's not as easy as it used to be. There's a lot more expected of teachers, and there's a lot more responsibilities. And just getting us through COVID is amazing. I think most of us that are on screaming from the classroom or screaming from the Zoom and gone into the profession. But I appreciate your, you're sticking with it, I appreciate your work for the town, I appreciate your work for the, for the students of the town, because that's where the future of our town is. And this is a well-deserved honor, great accolades. So I appreciate your efforts and on behalf.
Draco?
As you know, Newington has a really long, excellent reputation, and it's comprised of extraordinary and talented staff. So for you to be named Teacher of the Year, selected from among your exceptional peers, is quite an honor. And it's evident from reading this and also from, you know, the little bit of work we've done together, that you have skills, patience, energy, and commitment to your students. Not only for the short-term success, but what you're teaching them will give them long-term success skills as well. So thank you for your work with our students. And Newington's proud of you as a top four finalist, and wishing you continued success in your professional journey.
Counselor Nagel?
I'd like to also extend my congratulations to you and reiterate what the previous counselors have said. You are indeed an asset to the school system, the town of Newington. Having been, having been a retired high school teacher, I just can't appreciate enough how much you do for students at the level that you teach that really creates the future, not only of the town, but of the nation. So we thank, I thank you so much, and I know we all agree that we hope you continue doing the fine work you've been doing in the future, congratulations.
Counselor Braverman?
Mr. Rodriguez, our educational system is why many of us at this table, and I know in the gallery, moved to Newington to begin with. So thank you for carrying on that tradition, we're lucky to have you. Our students are lucky to have you and keep on doing the great work, thank you.
Send my sincere congratulations to, to hear a top four finalist. I mean, being Teacher of the Year is a huge deal, but to find out that in the state of Connecticut, you're among the top four, that is an amazing accomplishment. Is that process still ongoing?
It was a busy day.
Okay, I did talk to Dr. Fletcher today, and he said there were still some things going. So we wish you the very best of luck, we'll be crossing our fingers and everything else we have for you. And this accomplishment alone is absolutely amazing, I appreciate the work you do with our students. And I know you're an advocate for our school systems, you're one of the voices that always comes out when, when the school system feels they need a voice, and that's wonderful, and we applaud that. And we always want to hear from those parties that are invested in things, and we know that you're one of those parties, and I appreciate you, so thank you very much, congratulations. All right, I'm going to give you an opportunity.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the town and the Town Council for supporting us in education. As many of you said, you either moved to Newington, were a product of Newington. My parents moved to Newington, and I was a part of the Newington school system. My son is currently at the high school, my daughter graduated many years ago. So we value Newington, and I can appreciate, especially not just as an educator, but as a parent in this town, the service that you all do in terms of serving the community and our students. In terms of being Teacher of the Year, none of us gets here on our own, there's so many people that lift us up. And I wouldn't be able to do what I do if it wasn't for the custodians and the secretaries and all the people here that you see as well, who support us in the classroom. And of course, amazing administrators like Mr. Smith, and parents and Board of Ed members that came out today. When I say it was a busy day, the state visited Anna Reynolds today in its form of construction. And they spent about three hours there interviewing parents, students, staff members, Board of Ed members, administrators, as well as coming into my classroom for about an hour and a half and observing what was happening there today. And I am always impressed with the parents in this town who support education. I, some of these families I haven't seen in a long time, but when we reached out to them and asked them if they wanted to come in and be interviewed, they without hesitation said absolutely, and they came in, Nicole Ribero is one of them. So it's truly a community of people who lift each other up. So thank you for the service that you do, and thank you all for what you do and the support that we have here. Thank you very much.
Item this evening is presentations. We have first under presentations this evening, Great Blue Research, Inc. The council is looking to do a community assessment survey, and this is a company that is, Mr. Chapman's been working with, Mr. Chapman, are you there, would you like to do an intro?
Yes, first of all, I'd just like to say that we have not done a citizen survey for many years in Newington. I know when I was here before, we did several, but it's been about 20 years since the last one was done. And, you know, we, we try to listen to our residents and our businesses and, and those visitors that come to Newington. And, and what we're, we're finding is that we're getting to a point where we need input from our citizens to understand exactly what they would like to see change in Newington going forward. And this came to light with the topic of the school, I mean, not the school, but the Mill Pond Pool replacement, and the fact that Churchill Pool is also scheduled for replacement. And we've had a lot of discussions about, you know, what we should do, whether it should be one new pool, or two new pools, or no new pools, and where would it be? And it kind of raised our curiosity as to what do the, what do the citizens want? What would, what would they like to see the town do in that, in that regard? And then we have all the other issues that we're facing with on a daily basis. So I contacted Great Blue Research, Inc. over in Glastonbury to see if they could assist in any way. And come to find out, they're one of the larger consulting companies doing surveys for municipalities in the state. So we've met with them, and Mr. Brady Lee is here tonight, and he will present we'll say, review of what they're offering to the town. And we'd like to move forward with this over the next several months, if possible, if the council has an interest. And then we, when we get to our budget presentations, and we'll say early next year, we'll have a better understanding of what it is we should be budgeting, planning for, based upon what the needs are and the wants of the, the people that pay the taxes and expect the services. So I'd like to introduce Brady Lee, is he, is he here tonight, James?
Yes.
Okay, because I don't see him on my screen at all.
I think James is fixing it right now for you.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm not, can everybody hear me on my end?
Yes, we can, sorry about that.
No, no problem at all, thanks Keith, appreciate that.
Sure.
So yeah, I, I can, I put, I prepared a couple of slides, but it sounds like it's a whole house tonight. And if, I know a proposal's been passed along, would you prefer me to go through the slides? Or would it be easier, would you like to just ask questions and I, and I can answer them? Either one is fine with me. Why don't you go through the slides? As long as you prepared them, I, I'd rather see the slides if you could.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem at all, so I'll share my screen and pull them up.
Yeah, he's got the ability to.
Is that, does that work, is everybody able to see that?
Yes, sir, we can see it.
All right, just a couple of slides, I'll, I'll try to get through them and be as brief as possible, just so that you can, you can move along with, with your agenda and, and ask questions if you have them. So thanks again, you know, we really appreciate the opportunity to do this. As Keith mentioned, have, have spoken with him and had the opportunity to meet with a number of the department heads a couple of weeks or about a month ago to talk about this. So excited about the opportunity and appreciate, you know, you giving me the opportunity to, to speak tonight about the, this potential community survey, resident survey that you're potentially looking to accomplish. So a little bit about Great Blue, quickly, we're Great Blue Research. We are a full-service market research firm located just down the road in Glastonbury. So hopefully if we move forward, able to, to meet some of you in person. And I've been there for, for quite some time. And one of, in three of the primary industries that we work in are typically, primarily, you know, we work with municipalities, cities, towns, all sizes, work a lot in the public power. So within, within specific departments, you know, within municipalities, so municipally owned utilities and healthcare. And we're full suite of services from quantitative and qualitative. And I'll talk a bit about our process down, down the line, but, but ultimately what, you know, the goal is that we take on with every study, and what we help our clients do is, is under, is collect data from their constituents, whether that's residents, that's businesses, whom, customers, whoever that is. Dive into that data, analyze it, and then report out, and really help and consult our clients with, with using that data to, you know, to move forward and make decisions. We call them actionable recommendations, you know, we really, we're not a, a firm that just collects data and gives you a bunch of numbers, we really want you to be able to use it moving forward for strategic planning, whether it's new developments, referendums, et cetera. And we pride ourselves a lot on that, and really being a partner. You know, a lot of people, I'm sure, say that, but that's really what, what we look to do, to be a partner, that doesn't just come in and do the project. And we, we like to be there as the, as the, you know, the data, as it resonates, and as it percolates so that, that we can be there in the, in the long term. So just talking a bit, there's a, you know, we've worked with not only cities and towns all over the country, but especially in the past couple of years, we've worked with a number of them throughout the state. So a lot of, kind of experience during that, working with towns, towns and cities in the state on similar types of studies. So, you know, when we say your goals equal our experience, just kind of a breakdown of what these studies typically include. And all the studies that we do are custom to meet, to meet the client's needs. So we've worked with it, obviously, as I've said a few times, worked with a lot of municipalities, but we're not coming with it, with a template. While your goals and objectives may be similar in nature, and they're, they're, they're might not, they're, they're most likely won't completely align. So we'll come and bring our experience, but ultimately we'll, we'll build out the survey instrument to get the answers to the questions that, that you have. So, you know, a lot of times, just from, from speaking, even at a high level, understanding what some of the goals may be, they're definitely aligned with, with other studies that we do. You know, a lot of times they're looking at satisfaction with town programs and services, and specifically diving into the specific departments. You know, we're looking at overall opinions, we're looking at demands of, of program offerings and amenities. You know, a lot of times, these are used to inform strategic planning, either in the short or, or long term. Looking at what the perceptions are of the town overall, you know, perceptions of development, development of economic activity, you know, looking at the importance of community priorities and initiatives, et cetera. Again, it's all, it's all custom, but that's on a high level what, what a lot of these take into account when we're looking at an overall community assessment. Sometimes we are diving in specifically into, you know, we were working with the town of Westbrook on a study that was looking at a specific piece of property that they were looking to redevelop. The town of Groton, we've worked with closely in a number of studies, and most recently on a recreational facility that they had, that they wanted to repurpose and redevelop. So it, it runs the gamut from very specific initiatives to looking at something like this, where it's more looking holistically at a number of different, you know, opportunities and, and areas of investigation that, that, that's what we call them. So a little bit more about Great Blue and, and our process, again, it's fully, you know, customizable from, from, from end to end, but we, we take a very detailed approach, a very collaborative approach. So it starts with the discover phase for us, a project initiation meeting, we call it, that's typically an hour to two-hour meeting where we really dive in. You know, we're, right now, we have some, some level of understanding of goals and objectives, but, but not, not fully. So we'll really dive in and understand, what are the questions you need answers to? What's the data you need to be able to make decisions moving forward? You know, what specific areas of the town, services departments, do we need to, to really dive into and uncover? From there, that meeting is really the impetus for the survey instrument that we develop. So we go back, we put the first draft together, we go back and forth until it's finalized and signed off on. So nothing goes into the field, we don't start collecting any data until it's, it's fully signed off on by the team. Then we go ahead and we, we do all of the data collection, we oversee that entire process. For this, for this in particular, we're recommending doing that digitally for a number of reasons. These studies used to be done, you know, primarily via telephone, but that's become extremely expensive, and there's a variety of reasons why it's not as effective anymore. Sometimes there's, there's reasons to do so, but, but here, based on the discussions we've had, we, we think that doing it digitally will be the most effective and allow us to get the most data. So we oversee that, it's a, it's a collaborative process based on how you're able to distribute links and communicate things, things out to your constituents and your residents. And then once the data comes in, we analyze that, we clean it, we code it, we get it all cross-tabulated, and from there, we develop the report. And that's why you're obviously paying for the whole process, really, you're paying for the report and the consultation that comes after it. Our reports are very visual in nature, we do have lots, lots of tables and graphs, of course, outlining the data, but we really dive in and try to make it simple, but, but detailed at the same time to help everyone understand what the report's saying, and then what the recommendations are, the actionable insights moving forward, and, and what you should do with that. And included in that is presentations, especially with municipalities, there's often a need, you know, the request to, to present the data in person via Zoom, and that's, you know, it's included at, at no additional cost, unlimited presentation. So sometimes it needs to be through a board, or a smaller group, or a couple of groups. So, so all of that's included in the entire process. And just one more quick slide, a little bit more about our, our recommendation and around collecting the data digitally. I'm sure there, there may be some questions on that, and really ultimately the goal, the, the baseline goal would be to collect three to 400 surveys, and happy to talk about that. We believe that we'll, we would exceed that number, but ultimately, that's in line with, with the size of the population, and from a statistical reliability standpoint, that's the minimum we, we would want to collect. But, but I think there's many reasons to believe we'd collect a lot more than that. But digital surveys, they allow residents the opportunity, any resident who'd like the opportunity to provide their opinions, the ability to do so, and on their own time. It allows for diverse methods of distribution. We can distribute it via social media, email lists, we can drive people to a link on your website, we can include it on QR code, so it allows us a variety of ways to distribute it. And it gives us very good, we found, we, we've looked at all the studies over the past five or six years that we've done, and the more and more studies we do digitally, we're seeing a much more improved representation demographically of communities across the board, where phone is skewing much older in terms of the ages who are, who are picking up the phone and willing to respond. And as well, we're not seeing a drop off in, in response from, from an older population digitally. So there's a lot of benefits to doing that, and that's ultimately what we, we would recommend. So a lot of information squeezed into a, a short time period, I tried to, tried to get everything in that I could, but, you know, appreciate the time again, and that, and that's the, the primary slides and the information that I wanted to provide to everybody tonight.
Thank you, I'll look for council questions. And Counselor Rad?
Yes, two questions. One, will these be anonymous surveys? And you had mentioned both quantitative and qualitative, you know, how do, how do you balance that? And then actually, three questions, and how, how do you determine your sample?
Yeah, great question. So first one is on the anonymous piece, so yes, digital surveys, or if it's telephone, it's completely anonymous. There, unless someone wanted to provide information, which beyond demographics, we, we don't collect. So yes, completely anonymous, when someone takes it from their computer, from an iPhone, from an iPad, tablet, et cetera. So completely anonymous. Second, or third question was on the sampling, though, what was the second question again? Apologies.
The balance of quantitative and qualitative.
Oh, yes, yes, so typically, that's, you know, brings up a point about survey length. Typically, most surveys of this nature are quantitative, primarily quantitative in nature, and about anywhere from 30 to 40 questions is what we recommend. However, we always like to leave room for two to three open-ended questions, so that's where we get qualitative feedback in this process. Now, you know, a qualitative study, you know, focus groups and in-depth interviews, I would recommend, if, if there was interest in that, that's more of a secondary process that, that would dive into specific, very specific topics that may have came out of the survey. But yeah, it would be balanced with primarily quantitative, but the option to give qualitative feedback as well. And then the sampling, so it's more when we look at a digital, a digital survey, because everybody has the option to, you know, complete it, it's more of a convenient sample. But what we'll do on the backend is we would look at the demographic, and what we can do, depending on preference, is we can run, run the data in different ways, so we can weight it based on the demographic makeup of the, of, of the town, you know, current census data or data that you have, and then we can also show you the total that, that we have. So there are other ways that we can randomly send it out, if you have access to, to, you know, email records and such specifically, but oftentimes towns don't. But there's multiple ways that we can, at the end, once we have all the data, parse it out randomly. So it's a complete random sampling that, that's weighted and such to the, to the demographics, as mentioned.
Thank you.
Counselor Page?
Thanks, Mayor, thanks for your presentation. Can you speak a little bit more about how you decide to survey three or 400 people when we have a population of about 30,000? I think over 20,000 are adults, just how does that give us a 95% confidence interval? And, and can you speak to that a little bit? Because it is a convenience sample, so, and the number just seems small to me, so I was just wondering if you could explain it.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's a great question, and it comes up a lot. And again, it's really the, the minimum that, that we would target. So when you're looking at a population of 20, 30,000, really up to, you know, 500,000 to a million, when you have 300, or let's just 400 for the, for this purpose, is four completed surveys, you're looking at a margin for error of about 4.5 to 4.7% at a, at a 95% confidence level. So if we replicated the survey and did it 400 the first time, and did it 400 the second time, and 400 the third time, you're going to see 95 out of 100 times, the data's going to come back within five percentage points, either higher or lower. So now the higher we go, if we get 500, 600, 800, 1,000 surveys, and there's no difference in price when we do it digitally. So we recently wrapped up a survey with the town of Massachusetts and got just over 1,000 completes. A utility in Alabama we recently worked with had over 7,000 completes. So the, the higher, the more we get, the lower the margin for error, and then the, the greater ability that we have to parse out the data on the backend and run some different demographic weighted sampling. So again, 400 is the minimum, and that's what we always used to do via telephone. But the benefit of digital is now we can go above and beyond that for, for most less.
Just one other question, I know it, it sounds like, it looks like, and from what you said, we're asking about amenities and services in the town. Do the questions, if they've already been developed, or when they're developed, guide the respondent to specific areas of town? Like will we ask about parking wreck, will we ask about schools, will we ask about services at our town hall? How specific do you get to each senior center, et cetera, to each of our departments and programs?
Yeah, great question. So A, no, this, the, the questions for you specifically have not been developed, and B, it's completely up to your goals and objectives. So if the goals and objectives is to stay very broad, we'll build the survey that way. If it is very specific and we want to get department-specific, we will absolutely do that. When we get department-specific, it's some, it can, we don't like to go over 40 questions, more so really just because it will, people will. it will, people will drop off. So, when we start to get very specific into departments, we just have to be mindful of how many departments are getting specific questions. But, yes, if the goal is to drive people to specific either areas of town for a development, or a specific department that we have to get information on, we'll build the survey that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Badrico?
Yes, I'm just curious. In terms of, you know, a survey of community wishes, desires, wants, that's fine, but is there a way, or have you ever done a survey where you, it's kind of forced choice, because, you know, maybe we want a pool in every neighborhood, we want increased staffing in our schools, in our police force, in our fire department, you know, we want a chicken in every pot, and an electric vehicle in every garage. But every want, something has to be foregone in an environment of limited resources. So, is there a way where questions can be asked where, okay, this is what we want, and what are you willing to forego or give up in lieu of that? Because I do think that's kind of an important aspect, not to say, yeah, we want this, we want this, we want this, we want this, but what are you willing to forego if these particular wants are implemented?
Yep, yeah, it's a great question. So, typical, so first and foremost, a lot of the ways that we handle that from the top level is keeping the majority of the questions closed-ended. Like you said, you know, driving them towards specific options. If every question was open-ended of, you know, what would you like, we may get a lot of that. Oh, I want a Tesla in every, or I want, you know, electric vehicle charger in every parking lot, and I want a pool in every neighborhood, etc. So, it comes down to a few different things. We like to keep the questions closed-ended to things that are possible and feasible. And then, when we're looking at potentially big initiatives or big developments that are potentially going to be, if you have a pool in every neighborhood, that means we have to give up something else. So, we would want to take, like to take an education approach with the survey and/or ahead of time, and then, the communications that we do. But we can write the question so that, you know, okay, we've, there's three things on the docket. There's a pool in every neighborhood, and there's, you know, there's development A, B, and C. Well, if we put A in place, that means that tax dollars, are you willing to spend an extra $20 a year, or are you willing to forego these other services? So, it's a long way of saying it. Yes, it's absolutely the way. We'll write the survey to ensure that ultimately, at the end, the data you're getting is not going to just be tons of open-ended responses about, you know, wishes and wants that aren't possible. We'll build it so that A, communicated what's potentially on the table, and B, what would have to be foregone if those things were in place, if anything.
Okay, thank you. Council Nagel?
Yes, I'd like to ask about the development of the questions. Does the discerning as to what the questions are going to be, does it exclude looking at any previous studies or surveys? I know, in fact, not too many years ago, we did an extensive objective study of all our facilities. So, how is that handled? Does it ignore that? Does it start from scratch? Could you elaborate?
Yeah, great question as well. So, these are all great questions. Appreciate, appreciate these. So, it, again, is up to you. So, yes, absolutely, if you have past data, we always like to take a look at it, especially if there's a reason that you might want to track it. And there, you know, if there's data you collected five years ago, and you'd like to track two or three of the questions, we can absolutely either rewrite the question verbatim, or at least write the questions in a new way that still gets us the same data, so we can look at that and track that. So, yes, absolutely, any data you have, our team, we would definitely like to review it and go over it if you'd like us to. And if you'd like to track that data, compare it, benchmark it, etc., we can definitely do that. And as well, we can look at this study as a potential new benchmark moving forward. A lot of towns will do studies like this every other year, every year, and we can build the survey so that a portion of it, if there's initiatives, or there's areas that you'd like to track over time to see improvement, or see how people's reaction to them, or their opinions, perceptions change, we can build the survey with that in mind, so that you can very easily, moving forward, refer back to it and compare against it.
And one other thing, and it's merely because I didn't quite understand what you said earlier, I may be a little confused, other people maybe too. You do 400, you reach 400 people. Is this at random? Do you go through a list of whatever of 400, and if you don't get 400, do you do additional ones? You were talking about comparisons of 400. Do you do more than one 400 study? Like, you do the first 400, and then, you choose another 400. Could you clarify that?
Yeah, so, the 400 is the target number at a minimum that we would want to achieve. So, when we do it digitally, we have the ability to send it out to people to complete online, you know, at, and the way to do that at random is if you have access to email lists. A lot of times, that's not the case. So, when that's not the case, what we do is we distribute it through other means of communication that you have. That's not so much specific to the, it won't be sent directly to the individual, it's sent more to them through different types, through the communication methods that you have. We can post it on social media. If you have mailers that go out, we can communicate it on there and have a QR code that people can scan to go to the survey. They can be promoted in meetings like this and ask people to go to the website, your town website, where you can host the link. And it really, it opens it up to the entire town, so that we're able to collect, we say, and it's true, an unlimited amount of surveys. So, in a town of your size, if this is communicated well, there's no reason to think that we wouldn't get 800 to 1,000 people to come and take the survey, especially in a town they live in. We find people are very open to providing feedback, because they care about where they live, and they want to be able to provide their feedback. So, when we get above 400 responses, that's when we're able to, you know, we can start, if we think it's necessary, we can randomize and shrink the sample down to more mimic a random sampling. But we've looked at these types of convenience samples over the past couple of years and compared them to random samplings that we used to do on phone for the same company, the same study, and we're seeing very little difference in terms of the response rate and the data in terms of huge fluctuations. So, there's really not a lot of concern there. And really, there's just benefit because we're able to collect so much more data.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Council Braverman?
Do you, Mr. Lee, do you start with focus groups to determine the questions that you're going to ask the people? How do you determine what the topics will be?
Yeah, so, we typically don't start with focus groups to develop the questions. We typically work with the client directly, who would be a group of department heads, or a group of council members. It's really up to the client who's involved with that, and how the questions are developed. We can absolutely do that, the focus groups ahead of time, but that more or less is putting it on, you know, residents to determine what the topics are going to be that they're going to be asked about, whereas, I think the, you know, the council and the people running the town more so are the ones in a position to understand the initiatives and what they need information about, what you all need information about to make decisions and run the town as effectively as possible. So, we can do it either way, but typically, we don't start with a focus group with the end, or at least.
Thank you. Council Manki?
I'm having a little hard time deciding how you pick the random sample. Just bear with me a minute. If we send out by Facebook, or social media, or town website, and we get 1,000 people that respond to the survey, out of that 1,000, you pick 400 randomly? Is that how it works?
If that's what you would like, then that's what we would do, to provide you with that random sampling, if it's important to you. So, yes, we would pare it down to, we'd give you both data sets. We'd show you the entire data set of the 1,000, and then, we can pull out at random. And most likely, typically, the data doesn't change very much. But, yes, so that's specifically, if having a very random sample is important to the, for you all, we would absolutely do it that way. It's called an un-sampling plan. So, we would get on the backend. If we had 1,000 completes, we would pull, say it's 1,200, just for easy math, every third, we would take all the complete, the responses, completely randomize them, and then, from there, we'd pull out every third response, and then, that would make up the sampling of 400.
I guess my concern is, every year at budget time, you know, I sit here at the table, and no matter what we're talking about, whether it's the library, the fire department, the parks and rec, the schools, everybody comes out to tell me that's the most important thing in the town. And my concern would be that if we put out a sample, put out digitally just to everybody, those stakeholders would skew the data by having all their people sign, you know, all their supporters sign in and change, it would skew their response.
Yep.
So, I would be, because that's what happens for budget. I have a whole room full of library people, and the next night, I have a whole room full of fire department people, and the next night, a whole room full of parks and rec people, all advocating rightfully so for their positions. But it's not necessarily a sampling of the entire town, it's just a sampling of those supporters for those individual groups.
Yep. Yeah, great question, and concerns totally. So, A, there's protections on the front end in terms of people being able to stuff the ballot box. So, with a digital survey, we have ways to control the IP addresses, not control their IP addresses, but we can restrict the responses to a single, each IP address can complete the survey one time. We also have geo-coding abilities. So, if someone had their, you know, every one of their friends all over the country go and complete a survey, you know, while, sure, could someone be traveling on business and take the survey? Hypothetically, yes, but if we saw that 50 people completed it in, you know, LA and Chicago, those would come out of the survey. Yeah, I can say from a specific example, in-state, we did a survey for a specific, it was with a town, and they were, had a redevelopment for a historical building. And I was asked to come and speak to a similar group. I thought it was a similar size, and I walked into this room, and there were 600 people at the meeting. It was a very contentious issue, and they all were, had the same feelings about it, and they didn't think that the data was going to come back accurate. And ultimately, what we found was that it wasn't the case, and the people that were very heavily for it, and they were very heavily against it, everybody had the opportunity to provide their opinion, but ultimately, on the responses we got, gave us, and when we looked at the demographics and the psychographics, we saw that a full representation of the entire town, and it was an extremely contentious issue. So, we, it comes up a lot, that concern, but we have, the data has shown it's not a huge issue, and we really have not had a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All set, councilors? All right, I think we're all set. Thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate all the information.
Yeah, thank you so much for the time, and I'll send this deck along to Mr. Chapman and the head of the focus and such. So, any other questions, happy to, feel free to reach out anytime.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too. Next this evening, other presentations is our human services department update, and we have Carol Abrecht with us this evening. Welcome, come on up.
I was impressed and appreciative when James shared that the council requested a kind of touching base of where we are with energy assistance in particular, for our residents that may be experiencing hardship. So, Connecticut Energy Assistance Program, it's money federally, state, and it is available for folks who are at or below 60% of the median income. And typically, there's a basic benefit, and then, there's, depending upon your income level, two or three additional crisis benefits. All of that going into the season got cut significantly. It got cut to below the amount that was funded prior to COVID in 2019. So, again, really significant cut, and unfortunate timing that this dollar cut also lands at the point when our oil prices are up. So, we're not talking about a program that says you're eligible for 200 gallons of oil, we're talking about a program that says you're eligible for a certain dollar amount. So, if we're eligible for $400 worth of oil, and that used to buy 400 gallons of oil, and now might buy 100, you can see the dilemma. As we started to speak to people coming into us, we felt their concern at statewide organizations, Connecticut Local Administration for Social Services, we expressed the concern, we encouraged people to have their voices heard. I am hopeful at this point that they have been heard. I think, you know, this very local level of you asking for information on this is one example. Today, we hear that it looks like Congress is approving increased funding for the New England states. So, we're very hopeful that that will go through smoothly, and that then, the state in January may also do an additional bump up, because folks would really be in serious hard times without that kind of support. Past that level of assistance through Connecticut Energy Assistance Program, there's a program, Operation Fuel, which is funded by a combination of sources, but some of it donations from our payment of our ever-source bills. And that could be another layer of assistance, once people had exhausted benefits. But, you know, not, there's nowhere near the funding to repair the cuts that were made to the original Connecticut Energy Assistance Program. So, again, it's going to be a kind of challenging time period, where we're really hoping that the voices have been heard, and it is being responded to. And I think it's kind of, as we speak, being looked at, and hopefully, within the next, you know, week or so, we're going to have some good, I'm always a, I gotta go positive. I'm hoping we're going to have some good, positive results.
Well, we have lots of people in the room tonight. Everybody, contact your state legislators and federal legislators and let them know if you, right, we need all the support.
But get heard and support it, the better.
Anything else going on? The department that you'd like to give us an update on, you want us to know about? I know you have tons of initiatives.
I know, and I just feel the energy around me that I know there's lots of issues to be heard tonight. But we are going into, obviously, energy season, we're going into our holiday season. We have an expectation of 400 households in Newington that will benefit from our holiday program. And we're about 300 folks registered. Again, another area of possible shortfall. We have been told by Connecticut Food Share that we may not get all the turkeys that we need this year for Thanksgiving. So, turkeys, turkeys, turkeys. And that combination will be storage of turkeys, but we'll work that out. That's a good problem to have. We are sad to say that our clinical coordinator is going to be leaving us due to some family issues. So, we are putting the word out for that, and we'll be very hopeful that we can find someone to fill in shoes. She was awesome, she made great connections with the schools and our youth programs. They just, they thrived this summer doing back-in-person adventure-based programs. Terrific. And I guess the only other thing I would say is the, with our new emergency manager, we've met, and we have hope that we have CERT as a resource for us. Should we have an emergency storm, human services facilitates a shelter, and with that, CERT is a valuable resource to help us do that.
To have our CERT team going through response.
I truly am impressed.
Okay, so, turkeys?
Turkeys.
Okay.
Talk to your state reps.
Carol, as always, if there's anything you need us to get the word out on, you know, pretty much all of us have social media pages, or plenty of people, we can spread the word. So, if you guys develop anything that you put up on your site, and you want us to share it out, just shoot us an email. Well, I know, I can't speak for everybody, I will, and I'm sure most of us. and I'm sure most of us would, so. Okay. Councilors, any questions? Uh, let's see, Councilor Manke.
Yeah, just quick, how many, how many Newington families do anticipate needing fuel assistance help this, 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 this winter?
That's, that's, um, actually administered by Karen Halpert through CRT. It is typically, and she would have the better numbers than I do, but it's typically around 600, maybe a little more than 600 households, not individuals.
I assume, because I, I know my, my fuel bill is so strong to the roof, or my heating bill is not too bad. Is, is there, we're coming up on, on the season of charity here, where, you know, we have Thanksgiving and, and the holidays in December, i- is there a way citizens, you know, I could, could donate 50 bucks, 60 bucks, whatever, and, and, but to, to go specifically to fuel, uh, because I, I mean, food, food and, and, and holiday gifts are important, but I think, you know, a, a senior sitting home, you know, in, in the dark, shivering because they can't, they can't, they can't use that last 20 buck, 20 gallons of fuel to keep their houses, is, I think is, is, is a tragedy in this, in this country. So I, I think that's what I, is there a way to, I can just donate to, to fuel?
So any, any donation that comes through our department, you can allot to, do you want it to go to youth programs, to food, to fuel, you know, so you have that, that, um, control over it, and, um, and, you know, it, it would go through Connecticut Energy Assistance Benefits, if those were exhausted, Operation Fuel benefits, and then if those were exhausted, local based on donations, but obviously, if you think of those numbers, you know, 600 folks, even at just a minimal hundred dollars, which wouldn't even, I don't know what that is, like that's 25 gallons?
Yeah, by 25 gallons.
Um, you know, that's, that's nothing.
That's nothing.
So, so yeah, um, I, I appreciate, I would appreciate that, I, and I just think it needs to be solved on a, on a bigger global level.
I agree with you, but, and, and all your programs are important, and, and we should donate to all of them, but, but I think for this year, I think anyway, heating is, is gonna be a, a crisis, um, and, and not only in our town, but in other towns, because there are people who just get by day-to-day, but now, you know, with, with their heating bill has, has gone way up, um, they have to decide whether they get, you know, I heat the house, or I get food, or I, I get medicine, or, or whatever, I mean, those things are, are, are-
Councilor Braverman, and then Councilor Page.
Any local groceries doing turkey giveaways this year? I know Stu Lerner did last year, but I don't know if they are again.
Stu Lerner typically gives us a couple, all of the, all of the grocery stores in town give us, you know, a little bit from, from each area, and a lot gets funneled into Connecticut Food Share directly, which is where we get the major source of our turkeys. I did put out some dealer emails to, to managers at stores this week, kind of just cloaking them in, that, you know, we've been told maybe not enough turkeys, and did they have any thoughts on how they could help us with that?
Good. Councilor Page?
I would just put out a, um, a plug for the Oil Co-op, the Connecticut Oil Co-op. Some people may be aware of it, but it's a small fee annually to be a member, and then you get a, a rate that's closer to the harbor price, and there are many oil companies that participate. It's, it's a pretty significant reduction in your per gallon price. It's a nonprofit organization, and I think I paid last year $35 to be a member, and, and it does give you a better rate for your oil, so, um, I encourage people to just look it up for yourself and make your own decision. You can go online, Oil Co-op, and, yeah, it'll help.
Anyone else? Okay.
If, if individuals, um, there may be individuals now who never have avail themselves of your services or needed your services, do they call you, make an appointment, can they just walk in, um, how would they?
Thank you, Gail. We do work by appointments, um, they can call our main number, 860-665-8590. They'll be speaking to Lisa, who is our, our miracle frontline screeter and organizer, and she'll, um, get a little bit of info about what the issue is, and then connect them with an appointment with the appropriate person.
Appreciate the update. All right, now we are on to public participation, and we do have a three-minute time limit, there is a clock out there just to help us maintain that. Anyone who is in the room is welcome to come forward, we, you know, one at a time. We also, um, do have folks attending online, so if there is someone in the queue online, we usually take turns between who's in the room and who's online, just to make it fair. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you're in the Zoom application, you can raise your hand in the, um, public participation, in the participants' window, or if you're on your phone, star nine, will raise your hand so that we know you want to be recognized as well. And we'll start with Dr. Kelly.
Stuart Calle, 641 Willard Avenue. That, uh, Mr. Chapman, if he needs a survey to know what is going on in town, I think that's very sad, and that's evidence that he's out of touch with the people. All summer long, all summer long, people from all walks of life have come here, using their time, and that's a real accomplishment for people to come to speak their mind. And people will say, oh, Stuart, he's just, I've had personal issues with Mr. Chapman, he cannot even get back to me on seven violations in the cemetery of our town ordinances, and I've even hired a lawyer, and Mr. Ancon will even call me back, or Dave Griffith, I gotta hire a lawyer to work with Mr. Chapman? Chapman, it is time, I said it my first time I came here, and I'll say it today as well, you have to resign. You're out of touch with the people. If you need a survey, did any of us ask how much is that survey? Mr. Chapman, we have given you so much special attention and treatment in your job in the last two and a half years. Sure, COVID was an excuse, but you have to agree with Mitch Page. You don't live in town, and therefore, you don't know what's going on in town, and that's why you want a survey. We don't need a survey. We don't need to be spending money on a ballot referendum to decide if you should be living in town or not. So you have to resign. I personally think Gail Bedrinka would be a great interim town manager, she's the most straightforward and honest person I know. I love all of you, you are so straightforward. There's no problem here with you, the problem is Mr. Chapman. To put it in a clinical diagnosis, you have a cancer growing on your administration, Beth, and I don't think you'll be warming that seat in a year when you run again. Because, not because of you, or 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 you. All of these people have come to say there's a problem, not with you, we love you, Beth, and your administration, but we don't love what Mr. Chapman is doing. It's nothing personal, nobody wants to embarrass him, but it's just decisions are bad. He should have given that $30,000 bonus back, I said that months ago, I brought people here to show what are the problems, you don't need a survey. You had the elderly people saying, look, I don't want this town to turn into what it's turning into. So I've made up a list of hard questions that you have to sit down privately with Mr. Keith Chapman, and get clean with this, move on. Move on, Keith. Leap while you're on top, because these people don't think you're a people person. I know, you know, it's nothing personal, but it's time to go, thank you.
I'm gonna take one call online, please sit, but we do have one hand online, so we do go back and forth. Um, we have Michael Fassell.
You muted again.
Yeah, we both hit, there we go.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, you can state your name and address for the record.
It's Michael Fassell, and I'm over at Cedar Village in Newington on Cedar Street.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, I would just like to talk about the train station on Cedar Street. Uh, I've been living at Cedar, on Cedar Street for about 16, 17 years, give or take. I don't think it would be a good idea to do the train station. Um, you know, trying to come out of Cedar Street is, you know, out of my, my complex is one thing, but, you know, down by, down by Maple Avenue and all that, eh, it's just it would add more, more like traffic than what we have. You, you know, like, uh, the five o'clock, uh, five o'clock on a given day, it could take me 10 minutes to get out. If you had a train station there, it would add more. I also believe that we don't need one, because we have one in Bolin, we have one in, uh, Hartford, I believe, that first, so we, we have a lot of train stations. So I, I, I reject the, um, I reject the, uh, I don't know how to say it, but I reject having it be done. You know, I would, what they should do is take a poll, you know, send it to all the people in the, in the general area, Cedar Street, Old Farm Drive, Maple, Maple Hill Avenue, et cetera, and just see what people would say. 10 out of 1, people would probably say that they're against it. We need, um, like, like we need a hole in the head. Now, I, I don't mean that, I don't mean that just being disrespectful, but it's just, I don't think it would be a good idea, and that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fassell.
Thank you.
My name is-
Maurice Sunderland, and I'm the president of Ask Me Local 2930. We represent 176 members employed with the town in the Board of Ed. I come before you tonight as a last resort. For almost three years, we've tried to work with town manager Keith Chapman over issues such as subcontracting, pandemic pay, and scheduling of legitimate grievances. Mr. Chapman has refused to acknowledge our concerns and discuss these issues. Instead, members have faced threats of retaliation and intimidation for not settling grievances, as well as threats to leave posted positions unfilled because the union filed the grievances. Mr. Chapman's approach to labor relations is not only unprofessional and unnecessary, but it's a violation of labor law. This has forced us to file multiple Labor Board charges with the state. Our employees work hard and with tremendous pride to make Newington a great community. During the pandemic, we showed up to work every day, we made sure our schools were clean and safe, our cafeteria staff served approximately 750 breakfasts and 2,500 lunches daily, we made sure that town services continued uninterrupted, we showed up in the most uncertain of times. When the town manager gave pandemic bonus pay to our police, fire, and paraprofessionals, we fully supported the decision to recognize these town employees for going above and beyond the call of duty. However, Local 2930 members are frontline workers as well. We asked the town manager three times to negotiate with us over pandemic pay, but we were told he just wasn't interested. He has not only refused to talk to us, but he has yet to acknowledge our contributions to the town during COVID. If the town gave $175 bonus to each member, it would equal about $30,000, a small token of appreciation for showing up to work every day while risking our health and safety. The town manager made it clear he intends to subcontract our work. He does this despite the town paying a workforce that is capable of doing the work with superior results. When our own Parks Department renovates fields, Newington taxpayers save $150,000 per field. In fact, in a 2020 Hartford Current article, Parks Superintendent Bill DeMayo praised the impeccable work of our Parks Department staff. Keeping the work in-house is a no-brainer, but that, yet the town manager refuses to do so. The town manager's behavior is unprofessional and troubling. He has tried to bypass the union by directly dealing with our members, he's made it clear if we do not surrender to his unreasonable and detrimental positions, he will continue to subcontract our work, intimidate and retaliate against our members, and not schedule grievance hearings. This is required by contract and statute. The town manager and the superintendent of Parks continue to do what they want, when they want, and how they want. This conduct is damaging to overall employee morale. Many of our members are longtime employees and tax-paying residents of Newington. We need real solutions to ensure that the members can continue doing the work that helps Newington thrive. We're here to serve the residents of Newington and to partner with the town in providing quality public services. This relationship does not need to be adversarial. For this relationship to work, there must be a willingness to do so on both sides. We've always been committed to do our part as it relates to the best interests of the town. So if anyone on the council would like to speak with our union, we'd be more than happy to discuss our concerns in further detail. Thank you for your time in listening to the union's concerns.
Thank you. Um, anyone else that would like to come up is welcome to, there's no hands up online right now, so anyone in the room that would like to come up, may? Okay, if no one else is, pardon? Thank you. Last call? Oh, there's two more online now, so I will. All right, the first is Ms. Lyons.
Hi, Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. Um, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Mrs. Rodriguez, although my daughter has been out of school for over 20 years, I'd like to keep an eye on what's going on in the school system, and, uh, without teachers like her, my daughter wouldn't be in the position she's in right now, where she's able to provide very well for herself and help others at the same time. Our education system here, as far as I'm concerned, has been wonderful, I graduated from Newington High School in 1963, my daughter in 1998, uh, and I agree with Mrs. Rodriguez, without the other people in the school systems as well, the secretaries, that staff, the custodians, the, um, bus drivers, the cafeteria staff, uh, it wouldn't be the shining star that it is, and I'm just so appreciative that we still have that type of school system up and running in these days, because not all towns and cities have what we have, and I'm very thankful for it. Um, like I say, I don't have anyone in the school system, no grandchildren or anything else like that, but I, I'm so appreciative of Mrs. Rodriguez and all like her, they can't all be teacher of the year, but in my mind, they are to have put up with what they have for the last couple of years, outstanding. Our human services department and our senior center, two are, two, are two departments that are outstanding over the year, couple, last couple of years with the, uh, COVID crisis, as were all the other departments, they all pitched in and did what they had to do. I am a recipient of energy assistance, I urge anyone that thinks that they may be qualified and they come under the guidelines with the income limits to, uh, apply for the benefits, whether they be small, at least they're something. As for the survey, I, I hope for the survey, but in listening to the presentation, I don't know that going, uh, putting the questions out on our town website or even on Facebook is the way to go. It seems to me there must be some better way to find, to send out the notices to people in certain age groups or demographics or whatever, I know you can't target people, but I'm afraid of what might happen if we put it out on Facebook. It's quite well-known in, in the town that there's some politically motivated posts being put up, and it's something that I don't like to see, I don't like to see people being torn down, and I would hate to see what a survey might look like on Facebook pages. Maybe we can just ask what the town thinks, how they think we're doing, and what we could do better. I don't know how, I don't know why you couldn't just send it out to each and every household, if they decide to send it back, they send it back, if they don't, they don't. Last survey I heard about was a survey about housing needs, and I've never received anything in the 30 years that I've been actively involved in this town, I don't think that I've seen one survey come to my house or to me personally, but I applaud the effort, I applaud the effort, I hope it works out somehow, and we can find out what people are really thinking, and not on Facebook. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Anyone in the room? If not, I have one more call online. Okay, Ms. Parati?
Hi, um, thank you, Amy Parati, 175 Hillcrest Avenue. I had to leave the room to pick up my daughter, but I did want- but I did want to just say how proud I am of Mrs. Rodriguez. I think she is a fantastic advocate for our school system, for our town, for our community. She's done, she's been in town council meetings year upon year, fighting for the budget, advocating for the NRL renovation, which is going wonderfully, by the way. So very pleased to see her being recognized for everything that she's, she's done and is doing for our community. And since I'm speaking, I would like to comment on the tax agreement that is proposed for 690 Cedar Street. In the last meeting, the presentation discussed the projected revenue that would be collected from property taxes and car taxes. And while I think that's wonderful, I don't think the full picture was presented or discussed, which is expenses for new residential development. In a prior town council meeting, it was projected that there would be about 50 students living at 690 Cedar Street with a per pupil cost of around $15,000. That's $750,000 a year. There's also emergency services, service calls, and other town services that may not have been considered. To quote the Town Manager Keith Chapman in a recent memo I saw, he said, "We should treat the town's expenses as if it were our own household. Don't spend money that you don't have." So I'm wondering if we have projections of the actual expenses to go along with the revenues that we're expected to receive. When do we actually get a net gain if we do this tax agreement? It appears like it might be several many years out. So if we don't talk about both now, we may not be getting the full picture and can't make the best decision for what's right for the taxpayers of Newington. Um, that's it. Thank you. And I also applaud Anne Marie and everybody there in green today. Thank you for speaking up and support you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Perotti. I need to mention, we did receive email correspondence from Nick DeFrancesco of 244 Gooddale Road. His letter is in regard to the train station, and it will be added to the minutes of this meeting. Counselors, has anyone else received anything else that was asked to be read in? All right, we are moving on now to remarks by counselors on public participation. Deputy Mayor Padreco?
Yeah, looking out, first of all, I want to thank, you know, all of you for coming out, regardless of what the outcome is or isn't, the fact that you all came out, you sat through some additional business, you cared enough to, to make a statement, to make yourself known. And I see some signs that say, "We deserve respect." And I was a little concerned because, I don't know, you know, social media, whatever, you gave us respect. There was no disrespect, I felt at all, in, in, in your comments, in the way it was conducted. I felt it was very professional. You made your concerns known. Your conduct, it was professional, thoughtful, and I, I can't comment now. I, I need more time to think. I need more time to do some investigation on what you've presented. But I do want to say I was impressed with your presence, so thank you.
Counselor Page?
I want to also thank you very much for coming out tonight, all of you. Everyone who's participated in these discussions, whether it's the train station or any other issue, and certainly the labor issues. And we as leaders in the town need to take as balanced approach as possible with a sensitive and charged issue like this. So echoing in part Counselor Padreco's comments, I would like to gather more information. The Town Manager works for the council and at the pleasure of the council. And whenever there's an accusation of, among other things, a violation of labor law, I would like to learn what that's about so that then we can take that measured, thoughtful approach to how we would respond and make sure that in fact our town leadership is not in violation of labor law or any other charge that's been leveled tonight. So thank you very much. This is democracy in action. I love it. Anytime people come out, whether they agree with me or disagree with me. And I've said that consistently since I've been here, so thank you very much.
Counselor Rada and then Counselor Braverman?
I just want to echo my thanks, the thanks that other people have already spoken to, not only for you folks that are sitting in here tonight, but also you folks who are out there in the hallway and who have stood out there all this time and wanted to represent the issues and the concerns and your union. My feeling is that we all have the same goal in mind, and we've talked about this on a variety of fronts, but the, the best interest of our community. And I think that goes without saying, no matter who we are and whether we do agree or disagree with one another, the fact that we can have conversations, civil discourse, which is so important and which is so lacking in many areas that we see from the federal level all the way down. I am very in favor of open dialogue. I would really, as Counselor Page has said, would like to learn more and would like to hear more, and I'm very open to conversation and discussion. Yes, this was done in a very respectful way, in a very open forum, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate all of you taking the time to come and to understand that we are open and we are concerned as well about our community. And the fact that you all are part of the whole foundation of what goes on in our town. You have worked hard throughout the pandemic and continue to work hard and have worked very hard prior to that. Excuse me. And I want to thank you all for that service and for the ongoing attention that you pay to our students, to staff, to community residents as well. So thank you very much, and I would really like to hear more. And want to decrease the sense of contentiousness that I think a lot of us feel in some circles and, and to continue, and I'd like to see that stop. And I think part of having an open conversation, being able to listen and hear one another is part of that understanding and part of coming to a more civil discourse. So thank you so much.
Counselor Braverman?
I know that in union parlance, brothers and sisters is how you refer to one another. And I just want to say, we feel like you're an extension to our town council and our town, and you're really important to us. So we're one big extended family. We're all for Newington. Let's do what we can to work together however we can. We're here for you. Thank you.
Two things. One, I apologize for having to step out for a couple minutes. My, my wife decided to visit Disney World this week. So it's been hard to get ahold of her, and she's called to say she's fine and they're just giving her some food.
She's drinking a hurricane.
Yeah, we just keep granted, so I don't think so. But anyway, I apologize for stepping out. I just want to thank everybody for coming down. I always appreciate hearing from the public, and it's always good to get your, your point of view on, I think. So I appreciate your efforts to come down and, and sit here.
Counselor Nagel?
I'd like to extend my appreciation for your sincere comments and information. Many of them I was not aware of until secondhand, thirdhand today and also here during the meeting. So simply because there isn't a response on my part or others that may be more definitive here doesn't mean that we haven't been listening. One of the things that those of us on the table, I'm sure, are very aware of, it's not just doing things, it's listening to see what the town and the different members of the community want before making decisions. If indeed we are in the position whereby the council can make decisions because there are many things that are out of our hands. Once again, appreciate your being here, whatever the topic is that you spoke to, and we do need your input and we do need your information so we can hear all sides of any issue that may come forth to us. Thank you again.
Okay, it's difficult being the last one to speak all the time because it's hard not to repeat what was said. But I will say, coming in here this evening, I had read the article that was in the paper today. That was, I read it digitally before coming in. I expected there may be a few people, but to see the sea of green shirts that walked in this evening. Lots of people say when they come to speak at the council meeting, it's intimidating. Well, let me tell you what, being up here tonight is what's intimidating. So I, first of all, I want to thank you all, one, for taking the time and wading through the beginning of our agenda to make sure that your voices were heard. And we have said this over and over, that we can't make our best decisions unless we have all of the information. We have now heard one side. We have not heard from the Town Manager on the subject. So, so I will just say that, you know, there's not going to be any opinion or any, any statement made tonight from the council because this is a labor issue and a personnel issue. So we're not able to comment on that anyway. And we're not typically involved in personnel issues directly. So as you know, this is a formal complaint now, and it's in the hands of the Labor Board. So, so we do have to let that process play out. But I will say that I appreciate hearing the perspective of all of you. You work for our town and do such good work for everyone from, for all ages in our town that we need to hear your voice, and we're glad you were here to be able to express it. And I appreciate everybody that had to be in the hallway because we only have an occupancy of 49 people in this room. So we did make some accommodations as best we could. But I do appreciate those that stayed in the hallway and listened in. And, you know, I hope that you felt welcome, even though it wasn't less than ideal in terms of the seating. But we are appreciative that you were able to get your concerns out and your voices heard. Thank you.
Counselor, we're just going to pause for a moment because I think there's going to be some heavy foot traffic exiting. We'll just give it a minute for the room to clear, and then we'll continue on. Sorry, Tommy? Oh, you're welcome.
I mean, Hi took a shower and everything.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to continue on with our agenda. Just went out to adjust things in the hallway. The volume on that TV is pretty loud. So we want to make sure we stop the feedback if we can. Okay, all right. So we are going to move on now. The next item this evening, we're beginning consideration of old business. And the only item this evening under old business is the Tax Assessment Fixing Agreement at 690 Cedar Street. Mr. Chapman, would you like to start us off?
Yes, this is a follow-up to your discussions several weeks ago. This, this process has taken almost two and a half or over years to come to this point with Anthony Properties. And it is intended to provide a tax assessment fixing agreement for the development of a luxury upscale apartment complex on the old National Welding site just off of Cedar Street, which is now rented on Myra Cohen Way. It is a standard agreement that we have offered to all developments in the last couple of years. It's pretty standard for most communities now to offer. So I've asked Fauna Eller to be here tonight and our former assessor, Steve Kostowski. Steve and I have been married to this project for a number of months now, and we're coming finally to a conclusion, at least at this point. I have talked as recently as today with the developer, and it looks like all issues have been addressed dealing with the state and the town. So I anticipate that there probably will be a closing by the end of the year for Anthony Properties to purchase the old National Welding site at 690 Cedar Street. And so I'm going to turn over to Fauna, and she can briefly go over the agreement. It's very similar to the other agreements that you have agreed to for other developments in town. But Fauna, it's all yours.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I prepared just a quick summary, just so we all can get a quick refresher. Obviously, the project is located at one Myra Cohen Way, formerly 690 Cedar, the National Welding Building. The site consists of 3.99 acres. They're going to propose to build 238 apartment units and a parking garage. In the memo, I know it notes the building will consist of 262,274 square feet in four stories. The property has been, obviously, it's owned by the town of Newington. We are receiving no income from this property for about 20-plus years, I believe we noticed, we noted last time. The projected plan for the abatement commences at the final CO or the first CO and will run for 10 years. It is a graduated program, starting at 80% abatement, graduating down to 15% in the final year, which equates to an overall 45% abatement. Once the transfer is complete to the developer, once they purchase it, the town will be able to start collecting taxes on that property. So as construction costs rise, so does the cost to our developers who want to bring projects to Newington. Providing a tax fixing agreement increases the value of the project to the developer to create additional financing that may not be available without this agreement and allowing projects of this size to bring in more residents to our town who will in turn provide additional tax revenue outside of the project and support our local businesses, which I think is very important. Total potential taxes to be collected in the first 10 years, once the program begins, is $8,350,000 within that first 10 years. In the following next 10 years, it'll, it'll bring in a revenue of $15,195,000. This, this excludes motor vehicles. I just want to note that Newington is very fortunate to have a developer of this caliber bring this project in. And housing, there's a housing crisis, as we all know. The housing crisis is that there's not enough housing in Connecticut. So I think for Newington to be able to get a project like this would, would be very good for Connecticut as a whole, as well as Newington. Is Steve on here to take the wheel?
He sure is.
Good evening. Good evening, Cora. How are you?
Good, how are you?
The only thing I, I might want to add is, as the town has indicated in the past, there seems to be a very, very big concern about providing affordable housing. And there is an affordable housing portion of this development that is, is going to be set aside specifically for those individuals that would qualify under an affordable housing concept. Other than that, Fauna and I are here to answer any questions that Councilmen have.
Okay, thank you. Counselors?
My Mayor?
Yes.
James, can you put up the document that I sent you? There was a request to know what kind of history and finances this Anthony Properties has. And what we've asked them to do is provide a, a listing of, of current and, and prior projects that they've worked on throughout the country. And this is dealing with multifamily apartment complexes. And as you can see, they've done quite a few in a number of states. In fact, they're working in Connecticut in several areas right now. Massachusetts, I've gone up and visited where they're looking to build up there. So they, as far as their ability to build this type of structure and develop it, they certainly have history here, and they've invested quite a bit of money into these projects. Can you move down, James? These are, again, current and other projects that are not necessarily residential in nature. So they, you know, [inaudible 00:08:29]. So they, you know, commercial-type properties and so forth. And again, in various locations throughout the country. And I leave just page three to this as well. Yes, so they're not a fly-by-night operation by any means. They are well-established throughout the country and have done very successful projects throughout the country. And we're very fortunate that they discovered Newington and are willing to purchase a piece of property that it was pointed out that has generated absolutely no income for the town for many years. So we're very excited about having Anthony Properties join Newington. What you see here is, I think, where they really started out, they were big on building theaters throughout the country. So they've gone from theaters to commercial, retail, to residential. And impressive resume, we'll say, for developers. So we're very comfortable that they have the financial ability to develop the site. And keep in mind that if it doesn't get developed, for whatever reason, the tax agreement that you're considering tonight will be null and void. So it's not a cost to the town. There's nothing that's going to leave you in a negative situation if for some reason, or the economy the way it is, or inflation or whatever, if the project did not get built, then the tax fixing agreement features still exists and that's the end of it. And that's all I have to say. So I'll put it over to you, Ma.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Page?
Thanks, Mayor. Can you folks help us understand, based on what you said, Mr. Chapman, on April 26th, that we would have up to 50 students in that development? And then on September 13th, you said maybe six to eight. Number one, why the discrepancy on those two numbers? And if it is closer to 50, how long will the other town residents be supplementing those students to send them to our schools?
Unfortunately, I'm not remembering how many students we projected. Was that something that I developed?
You stated on April 26th, there would be 50 students in that development.
I think that was all developments that we talked about.
It's one hour and 59 minutes on the tape. On YouTube.
I don't recall that, but that number was not correct.
Why was it said that?
Pardon?
Why did you say it?
I don't know. I don't recall saying it. I may have, but if I did, I'd make a error in saying what.
Because if that number that you said, one hour and 59 minutes on April 26th was correct, at 15,000 per student, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we'll be paying for those students. And our first year, we're getting, what, $385,000 in revenue?
Again, I don't recall.
Yeah, we had that grid. I don't have it in front of us right now.
I'm just concerned that we're already underwater for a few years.
This project won't be built for three years. So you're going to be collecting tax revenue for three years without any impact on the town.
That's a very good point, Counselor Donahue. And we would have also received into the coffers the sale price of the property as well. Correct?
And, yeah, again, I can only tell you what I can recall.
If I can add to that, between the final design, which is presented to you today, I'm not sure at what point Anthony Properties made a significant change in the number of and types of units that they are going to be building. At one point, and it could very well have been at that time, they were considering some of these units to be three-bedroom, which would have been very, very conducive to having students or kids there. But Fana, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that is no longer viable for this project. And this is simply made up of one- and two-bedroom and studio units.
Yeah. I think they're thinking their market is going to mostly be singles or newly and starting out, or even retired, sold the home, but don't want to leave Connecticut yet. So we'll have to see what actually happens, but these aren't large unit, you know, they're not three bedrooms, they're not four bedrooms.
I think 72% are one-bedrooms or studios. I believe that was the figure that was provided to us. So three-quarters of these apartments would not have the possibility of having students. And then the remaining 25% are two-bedrooms. And I don't think that this apartment complex is the type of a development that's going to draw a lot of families that have school-aged children.
And I would just, yeah, I appreciate that. I would just also point out, and I appreciate, Mr. Chapman, your comments and others on September 13th promoting the benefits of the fast track. Because while this has lied fallow for a couple of decades, one of the reasons for that is because we haven't had a fast track and we haven't had a train station, which we will have there eventually. It's going to happen. And any smart developer, and these folks I'm serving are very smart and successful, recognize that when you have mass transit, it not only is a real boon to the town, but it raises property values. If we look at study after study through Canada, the United States, Southwest, when you have mass transit, fast track, busways, and you have trains that connect you to other big cities so people can recreate and work and reduce their carbon footprint, it raises property values along that busway and that train station. These people are very smart and they recognize that. So it's thanks to the busway and it's thanks to the eventual train station that this property is so valuable. And whether it's this developer or a future developer, this property will sell and sell for a good value and continue to be, all the property around that will continue to rise in value as a result of mass transit. So I'm glad you recognized that on September 13th. And the last thing I would say is I'm still concerned that, two things, the details are still muddy on students, cost to the town, emergency services. And there aren't enough details. There are plenty of details on potential revenue for taxes and cost to the developer, but no details at all on the benefit they're reaping from investing $70 million. And they should benefit. I think that's great that they're going to make money. But no one has justified for me, for one second, why we should give them a tax break based on any real data, objective data. So I'm a no on this. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Ratt?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I understand the importance of reasonable development. I am certainly not opposed to development in our community. We need this. I encourage it. The site's a good location in terms of transportation, public transportation, its proximity to Central Connecticut State University, the businesses down along Fen Road. I do have a few questions, however. What percent of the units are going to be affordable housing, number one? Well, I'll give them one by one, so I don't overwhelm you with questions. Percent of affordable housing?
Steve, I think you, did you know that one?
I believe it was between, again, they're still working out the details. It's going to be between 10 and 15%.
Okay. And has the developer already been apprised of the fact that the tax fixing agreement is coming before the council? And what that is, the graduated from 80% to, I have to look again. Anyway, the graduated table, and is there any negotiation?
We, I work with them together with this, so they are fully aware of the schedule that we are presenting and that this is before the council tonight.
Okay. Do you feel that there would be the opportunity for negotiation in terms of any change in that scale and that tax fixing agreement?
This is what they felt would work best, and we didn't really disagree with it because it still ends up being the 45% abatement overall. If this isn't something that's amendable to the council, I'm sure we could go back. But this is what they would like us to present.
Fana, I also may add that there's already been a change. A previous slide that James put up there, again, updating this project, it indicated that their total investment now is closer to $80 million. It was $77 million. This illustration that I created was early on in the conversations where they were only talking about a $70 million investment.
Okay, yeah, my one concern I have is graduated abatement. And I know that's a concern that, you know, other folks have voiced as well. We come up with, in the long run, after 10 years, we come up with, it levels the playing field, but why such a drastic increase, I should say, or decrease, whichever way you look at it, rather than equitable 10 years across the board?
I believe it's due to the costs. The developer will have to be putting out a lot of money initially. And obviously, has already put out money. And I believe that was important to them to at least recoup some more in the beginning as quickly as possible.
Fana, also, their development would also include startup costs in getting the facility fully leased up. In the first few years, the vacancy rate will probably be exceedingly high until the word gets out that this complex is available and the word gets around. The most expensive portion of a development of this kind is the first five years of a development like this, basically because he's faced with significant high vacancy until the word gets around it. You know, this is a place that a lot of people may be interested in.
Won't we also get permit fees as well?
Yes.
Yeah, which would be pretty high.
Okay, and not to be argumentative, and I'm not going to belabor the point beyond this, but just that, isn't this, aren't these costs that we've just heard the same that any developer would incur in the first few years of a development being built and then being, having residents coming in and either renting or purchasing, depending on whether it's an apartment or a condo situation?
Let me just say that the abatement design, we've left that open for each developer to come to us with what they would like to see as that makes the most beneficial for them based upon their financing and what they project the income as the project moves forward and gets complete. So each developer has had the opportunity to negotiate with the town administration. And this is what we negotiated with this project. Whether they would be willing to change this, I would hazard the even guess. I don't believe that they're looking for this to be changed. This has been discussed for months and negotiated for months. I think we've taken the position for all these developments that a certain percentage will be offered and how they want to implement it is their choice.
No, go ahead. Please finish.
You know, it's 45% for 10 years. We leave it up to them to tell us how they want to have it administered.
And I'm certainly cognizant that, you know, this has been lying dormant. We have not been able, we've not been collecting anything on it. It's been an albatross for, you know, however many years. So, you know, having someone have, take that interest and want to build something, which could also benefit us in terms of transit-oriented development. You know, I'm aware of that. And I thank you all for pulling this together. Although, you know, I've expressed my concerns, but thank you.
Counselor Camillo?
You're right about the transit-oriented development. That's what this is. But where are they going to go to work? No one works in their offices anymore in Hartford. Even the state, 90% of them are at home. So, you know, the buses are empty most days. Only two days a week you'll see cars in the parking lot, and that's Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And, you know, we wouldn't get any taxes if we couldn't get a developer in it, costing the town money. So I think this, 90% of the towns out there, look at Windsor, Windsor Locks, Bloomfield. You got Amazon up there. We could have had Amazon here a couple councils ago. And we need that. What we have right now is, it's not sustainable. If we don't have development, our school is going to bankrupt our town. And we need to do something about that. So the more development we have, the better we are.
All right, thank you. Counselor Manki?
Just a couple of quick points. One, I guess I'm more comfortable with the 45 every year straight across. But it's common to do these graduated abatements with other towns. And I think the first year was in the council, we considered a proposal brought to us by Mr. Brecker for the Mara property, I believe, on top of the hill, which was a graduated just like this, I believe. So are these common for other towns to do, the graduated? Anyway?
Fana, or Steve, would you say this is common?
I know we did a couple in Weathersfield and they were graduated.
There were several done in the town of Windsor where I was formerly employed, and virtually all of them were graduated.
Thank you. And the other thing I'll point out is that the graph here that you show assumes that the mill rate stays at 3.8, 3.849 over the course of the next 20 years. And it also assumes, it also doesn't assume that the reevaluation in 2025 and 2030 and 2035, which will also increase the value of the property, I would assume, and then also increase the tax revenue obtained from that property. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. And the other point I would just make is that Counselor Page's point about the busway is a valid point. But when I first joined the council, the busway was already in operation, already started in operation. And this property had been sitting there. And I know that the consultant we had for environmental development or economic development had tried to market this property for years and had no takers. So I guess I'm concerned if we don't pass the abatement and this and this developer goes, we have a piece of land again that we can't develop because other people should have seen the value of that property, but they haven't yet. This company has, and I think that's to their credit. I also concern that if we don't pass the abatement and a train station comes to fruition and we want to develop that property and we're known as a town that doesn't do abatements, those people would develop maybe around Berlin Train Station or maybe around the Platteburg Train Station. And they wouldn't consider Newington because we would have that reputation. I don't like it. If I was, if I had my way, I think I would give no abatements to anybody. But I would hope other towns would do the same thing. But as long as other towns are doing abatements and we're trying to compete in that field, that same playing field, I don't see how we cannot give an abatement and still try to get people to develop on our property.
Counselor Page?
Thanks, Mayor. Counselor Camillo, I was not only continuing, as I always do, to point out my support for mass transit. And yes, because of the pandemic, you're absolutely right. Bus and train participation dropped significantly. There have been some articles recently in the current New York Times about significant upswing in mass transit utilization to near pre-pandemic levels. And over the next 30 years, which is really what we have to think about, that should only grow significantly as the younger generation has demonstrated a significant interest in mass transit over individual cars. The other thing is, I don't know, Counselor Manki, did you vote on the moratorium for three years to not develop along the busway?
I did not.
You didn't vote on that? I don't know who on this council voted, but the reason why, you're right, there wasn't development there after the busway. The reason why there wasn't development along the busway was because some council, somebody sitting on a council in this town voted on a moratorium for three years because people were scared of what would happen on the development. And it's one of the reasons why people have dragged their feet with a train station in park, which is there's nervousness about what will be developed. And that's one of the reasons why there was a lawsuit against the affordable housing that went in, is now going in at Cedar Street. So I would just point that out. And so my last point would be, I am all in favor of development. And so my last point would be, I am all in favor of development. I voted in favor of development when we had retail, which was going to generate lots more dough. I voted against the Payne Road property for similar reasons. And I'm voting against this abatement because it's an uninformed tax abatement deal. It is not a bad tax abatement deal, and I love tax abatement, and I love development. What I love also is actual information and data. Just a moment ago, I believe it was Fana or Mr. Chapman said, yes, we leave it up to the developer based on their income. And I've seen, when I've asked for it, they've said, no, we don't have any idea what their income is going to be. So either you know what their income is going to be as you've negotiated for two years, or you don't know, and I'm still confused because I've seen no projected revenue for this company. So I'm all in favor of this abatement, I'm all in favor of development, but uninformed. And I'm not going to make a multimillion dollar decision without the data. That's irresponsible. So, thanks.
Counselor Rada?
Just one final comment, and actually it's in response to Counselor Manke, that I am not opposed to abatement, and I understand the importance of it, and that will help drive developers to come into our community and we can have responsible, informed development. What does concern me is why it's not the same percent across the board for 10 years. There's, this is very drastic. Yes, the bottom line hopefully comes out the same. But this is very uncomfortable for me in terms of the proposal here and feeling that it's being driven more by the developer than any kind of negotiation that we could come up with as a town or as Mr. Chapman and the other folks that he's working with.
Okay, Counselor Manke?
Two points. One, just Counselor Page's, moratorium or not on development, we, as a council, when I got on the council, one of our priorities was to market this piece of property. And Mr. Brecker was directed by this council to do whatever he could to market that property. And we had no takers for that property. So in the seven years I've sat in this council now, this property has been vacant, has been sitting there, vacant. And the advantages of people living there and taking the mass transit has gone for nil because there's nobody, there's nobody, other than people drive up in park, nobody's walking to the mass transit. This would allow them to, if they work in Hartford or someplace on the mass transit, would allow them to do that. So the moratorium, whatever council voted for or didn't vote for it, that's, we tried to market this property. I've said into many executive sessions about real estate, try to market this property. Counselor Rada, I'm not crazy about this graduated either, but I'm comfortable with it because I think it sets the tone for other people. If we're going to do mass transit development around train stations or busways, we need to, developers need to know that they can come in and we'll work with them. And this gentleman is going to invest $80 million, this company is going to invest $80 million into our town. $80 million, which brings in more people to use our restaurants, more people to buy food in the stores, more people to take advantage of the same thing we moved the town for. With apartment complexes of, you know, one or two apartments, I don't see a whole influx of students in the schools. Not in this development, anyway. So I'm in favor of this. I would vote for it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Camillo?
The moratorium was started with the TPZ because they didn't have a plan for each station. So they put everything on hold until they had a plan. They started with Cedar Street first, then they went to Newington Junction, and that was all it was. And it took about a year and a half. The lawsuit for Cedar Street, for the apartments, they were denied because they could have done a better job of design and bringing something to the town. But it was more of a stick building, and it, you know, it just didn't look right. It didn't fit. And that's why it was denied. And they came back and they won. They did a better job when they came back. They've added some things, and it looks better, and they've changed things. So they're getting what they want, and the town is too, because that's helping with our the housing problem we have. And I think we're only off by 130 now, or not even that, because of the housing that's on Payne Road and on Roland Turnpike. So I think we're right there.
All right, Counselor Page?
Last comment, just.
He was also right. These people are going to support all the businesses in town. Even though they're the far end of Cedar Street, they can make it up to the center of town and help all the businesses there that really need our help. So.
Thank you.
Counselor Page?
Thank you. Last comment, I promise. In response to Counselor Manke, I agree with you, not enough people walk or bike to the busway and to that area. And one of the reasons they don't is because we haven't done a good job of securing, working with our state and federal partners to secure grant monies, to build sidewalks and bike lanes, and creative walkways and crossovers from what's becoming development along Cedar Street more and more to that busway. And not just the folks who live in that new development on Cedar Street, but other town residents. If we're creative and we're thoughtful and work with our state and federal partners, which I hope we'll do, I know we've done some nice work, thanks to our state reps and the work that this council and others have done to bring money to Maple Hill and the Britton Avenue, to Hartford Avenue and Main Street to do some streetscape work. I would hope that as part of our ongoing development, you know, growth, I agree with Counselor Camillo. I think we need to develop, we need to keep growing. I support that, and I agree with you 100% sincerely. I think that just as in our motto, growth and progress, and progress means, in these times, progress means that we do it smarter. We don't just build buildings so we can raise tax revenue and grow. We do need to grow. We need to raise tax revenue, keep our tax, our mill rate stable. But we need to progress too, and we need to have smart growth, smart growth, which means pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, and safe. So, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Padreco?
Yeah, I, like Counselor Manke, and people here who've sat through solely development, they're starting to all like swirl around in my head. But for one thing, there's a couple of things I want to say. First of all, the Amara project that was on top of the Cedar Mountain, when we gave the, we were not allowed to ask what the financials were. It sucked. I was very concerned because it sounded like Disney World. I mean, you guys weren't around then, but it was like they were going to have an amphitheater, they were going to have a pool, they were going to have Starbucks, and I'm thinking, this, the developer had no other experience in that particular type of development. I, in my gut, knew it was like not, it wasn't going to work, and it didn't. My confidence level with this is that, from looking even at the number of developers, they're nationwide, they're proven, they've got a good track record of quality development. When we're talking about, I think people in town are concerned or were concerned of what could go along the busway in terms of transit-oriented development. Because, you know, we're not, we're not DC, we're not, we're not wealthy communities where we're connecting, you know, vibrant hubs and blah, blah, blah. What would we, what type of development would we get? And people are concerned about strip malls, maybe, more motels, let's say. You know, they couldn't turn it into another Roland Turnpike. You know, inferior construction. This particular project, to me, it's luxury upscale. This, the busway is not utilized. I mean, I walk along, ride along the busway a lot. An upscale luxury, more, not luxury, but more of an upscale development there, I think is going to generate more upscale type of development along Fen Road. And hopefully, you know, we don't need any more strip malls, we don't need any more donut shops, we don't need any more empty vacant office buildings out of whatever. So I think perfectly, I would love to park them, that you know that. But the fact that.
The bench.
Proven developer who's got proven record of success. They're bringing some upscale luxury development along the busway. And quite frankly, there, even in other towns, there's not a lot of upscale stuff along the busway right now. You know, hopefully New Britain will maybe do something on there, and they're trying. But, and also, you know, there were, I think, developers were not interested in this particular piece of property for, you know, the last 10, whatever, years. I think this is, this is a grab. This is a good opportunity for us. And considering it's going to give tax, needed tax revenue, I think it's going to be a, coming into town, we're going to see something like luxurious and pretty along, let's face it, Cedar Street and Fen Road. Right now, we're not the most attractive places in town. And I guess I'm going to vote yes.
Counselor Manke?
I just, final comment, I just point out, this is going to bring over 10 years. If everything stays the same, if our mill rate stays the same for 20 years, 20 years, and the reevaluations, there'll be one, two, three, four reevaluations. If they stay the same, it'll bring in $23 million, which will relieve the average taxpayer tax for $23 million. If we don't pass this and the developer says, okay, I'm going to go someplace else to Southington or to Manchester or to West Hartford, and that land stays vacant for another 20 years or plus, we have put, we shifted the tax burden of $23 million back to the average taxpayer. And so I'm, again, I'll vote for this, and I would call a question.
Counselor Camillo has his hand up.
Nope, sorry.
And I haven't had a chance yet.
I'm sorry. I'll suspend the call and the question for two people.
Our manager actually said that, maybe the maximum of 50 students. And then he said, you don't expect it to be anywhere near that. That's what he said at the end of that quote. I just had somebody look it up.
All right. I'm just going to offer my comments before we take a vote. We do need to read it, and we haven't even read the very long resolution in yet. But Deputy Mayor Padreco said she'll do that for me. So I just wanted to comment quickly, not to beat the dead horse, so to speak, but I think this is a classic example of beauty is in the eye of the beholder. There are very differing opinions at the table. And so from my perspective, what I see is similar to some of my colleagues around the table, that this will provide a development that we can be proud of as people come into our gateway into Newington off the highway. It would be a beautiful development to see, to experience. In terms of the transit-oriented development piece, this will, it's built in ridership. If we're looking to support transit-oriented development, which some counselors feel very strongly about, in my estimation, this builds in ridership for them. The graduated piece of this deal, I'm not worried about. The early years of this project, as Counselor Donahue alluded to, there will be the cost or the amount coming into the town for the sale of the property that will help offset those differences. There will be permitting fees and hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm guessing, probably close to half a million dollars in permitting fees, if I'm guessing correctly. Steve and Mike Close?
Let me just say that the permit fees on this particular project are included within the purchase price because we wanted to.
Oh, okay.
Get the, as much money upfront from the sale of the contaminated land as possible. So we added in what was projected to be the permanent fees, parental fees as part of the sale price.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that detail. So we've got the graduated piece of, while it's being built, we're still collecting taxes on a property that has sat vacant and not bringing in any revenue for 20 years. The selling price comes in. We are building ridership for the Fast Track right next door. We're building in support for our local businesses. There's several businesses being built over there, as well as the existing businesses on Fen Road that will have, you know, automatic people within walking distance to them, so it builds up clientele there. It is tackling our affordable housing piece that we've been working so hard to get to that state minimum at least. So this will help us get to that as well. In terms of the Counselor Page's comments about trying to secure monies for developing bike paths and whatnot, I think we've done a very good job in Newington of starting those projects with the ones that you alluded to, Counselor Page, the streetscape projects. You know, you can only get so many, so much money from the state at one time, and we've got several projects going on. So, and I think that, for me, you couldn't catch me riding a bike on Cedar Street. I don't even like driving my car on Cedar Street in terms of safety. So I don't want bikes on Cedar Street. I think that's insane unless there's a lot of changes that take place, and that may be something that we can do in the future in conjunction with other programs. But right now, that's not something I would want to see. And that was one of the concerns for the Dakota Project, that was the safety of people walking and perhaps riding or whatever on Cedar Street because there wasn't enough of a shoulder, so to speak, for people to walk safely on such a busy street. So I think this is a win-win. I am thrilled to get this property moving, this development going, and to have this be a viable piece that our residents can benefit from, that has been vacant for so many years. So I'm thrilled with it. And I would thank, Steve, I know this has been a longtime baby of yours, working on this from day one. I would thank Fana for jumping in, starting with us, you know, recently. And Keith, I know your efforts on this have gone from the beginning as well. And I know concern was raised about, you know, letting the developer have a say. But when, especially when we're the property owner, you have to negotiate this kind of a deal to make the developer come to the table and want to be part of the process. So I understand the need for the negotiating piece in this and allowing them to be able to afford the project and make it happen and making the abatement work for the developer as well as the town. So I definitely feel like I understand that and am okay with what's on the table. Deputy Mayor Padreco, would you please read this long motion in for us?
Tax assessment fixing agreement for Anthony Properties LLC at 690 Cedar Street. Whereas, Section 12-65B of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended provides inter alia that any municipality may enter into a written agreement with any party owning an interest in real property in such municipality, fixing the assessment of the real property and all improvements there on or therein, and to be constructed thereon or therein for a period of not more than 10 years, provided the cost of such improvements to be constructed is not less than $10 million and are constructed for certain uses, which include office, manufacturing, permanent or transient residential, retail, warehouse, storage, or distribution, structured multi-level parking in connection with the mass transit system and information technology, recreational facilities, or transportation facilities. And whereas the town of Newington owns an interest in 690 Cedar Street in Newington, Connecticut, said property, said property is more particularly bounded and described as set forth in Schedule A to be attached heretofore and made a part hereof. And whereas Anthony Properties LLC has an interest in acquiring and developing the property set forth above in Newington, Connecticut, property. And whereas Anthony Properties LLC has indicated its intent, if it receives the tax benefits herein provided for, to construct improvements to the property, which will permit them to locate and construct a multifamily housing unit consisting of 238 units. And whereas such improvements consist of a housing unit of approximately 264,274 square feet and a parking structure of approximately 99,396 square feet of new construction. And whereas said improvements will contain approximately $56,400,000 of fully taxable real property upon completion. And whereas the improvements proposed will meet the conditions and requirements for entering tax assessment agreements contained in Section 12-65B of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended. And whereas, as an inducement to Anthony Properties LLC to construct the improvements, the town deems it desirable to enter into a tax assessment fixing agreement, fixing the assessment with respect to the improvements. And whereas the town and Anthony Properties LLC each have full right and lawful authority to enter into this agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that a tax assessment fixing agreement with Anthony Properties LLC is hereby approved in accordance with Section 12-65B of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended. And Keith Chapman, town manager, is authorized to execute an agreement on behalf of the town once all required approvals have been granted.
Second.
Second by Counselor Nagel. I think, Susan, are you available to do a roll call vote on this one?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Thank you. Go right ahead.
You're welcome. Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Padreco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Mankey?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Counselor Page?
No.
Counselor Rada?
Abstained.
Mayor Del Buno?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, one abstention.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're talking like, you're like God.
All right, motion passes. We're moving on now.
If I go to heaven and Susan is God, I'm in trouble.
You don't want your money back.
Yeah.
Uh, next item this evening is resignations and appointments. Um, we have Conservation Commission alternate.
Okay.
Counselor Page?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby makes the following appointment to Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission. Uh, David Wemet, member at forty-two Vivian Street, already D term nine twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two to eleven thirty, twenty twenty-three replaces vacancy. Appointment of, uh, B Conway, a member.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Braverman, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is refunds. Uh, Deputy Mayor Padreco?
Resolve that property tax refunds in the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents are hereby approved in the individual amounts. And for those named on requests for refund of an overpayment of taxes certified by the revenue collector, a list of which is attached to this resolution.
Second.
Second by Counselor Rada, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is approval of the minutes for September sixth, September, uh, special meeting. September sixth, joint Town Council Board of Ed meeting, special meeting, and September thirteenth, regular meeting minutes.
I move approval.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Mankey, seconded by Counselor Donahue, any discussion?
Counselor Nagel read them and, and he approves.
Yes, I did read them over.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are on now to new business. And we have with us this evening, uh, the first item under new business is the Sonic Group Grant Writer Updates. Mr. Chapman, do you wanna start? Yep.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the council had requested that, uh, our grant writers come before us and, uh, give an update. They've been on board now for, I guess, almost a year or more. And Sonia is here tonight to present that. Update to you and I'm gonna just turn it right over to Sonia. Go ahead.
Hi Sonia, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. Is it okay if I can share my screen to do a quick overview?
Sure. Yes, you should be good. Yep.
Okay.
I can see it, but.
There it is, we got it.
Okay, thank you for having us this evening. Nick is also on the line, and we're here to give a brief update of what we've been up to over the past year. See if I can do this. I'm so proud of myself here. So what we came on to do, uh, last year, we, uh, said that we wanted to assess. What the towns' needs were, uh, find some grants that we could write to, do some grant writing, and then some post upon awards, some post administration. Um, we looked at different state sources and SHPO, Connecticut Humanities, Connecticut Deep, some, uh, Department of Homeland Security, and some private resources. And, uh, the results were that the SHPO was awarded, Connecticut Humanities was awarded, Connecticut D Trails Grant was not awarded, but we, we were told we were very close and a resubmission should be funded. Hopefully, if the money's, uh, available this year. Uh, and we submitted two, uh, grants to FEMA for the fire department and. Uh, Assistance to Firefighter Grant and a SAFER Grant. Those two are pending. Uh, those will be either, we'll, we'll know by, from, uh, talking with the program officer. We should know by the end of October, first week of November. If those are not awarded, we'll work with the program officer on a resubmission. And then we were awarded a, a grant for Firehouse Subs for extrication equipment. So here's what we, uh, a little summary. We applied for, uh, about a half a million dollars. We were awarded, uh, just under two hundred thousand dollars. We're, uh, we had won the, the Trails Grant, which we hope to resubmit this year, and we have, uh, two hundred thousand dollars pending in Firefighter Grants. So here's the summary, a quick overview of what was put in, um, and the amount awarded for the record. So this is what our, we'll continue to do this for, uh, the following year, should the town of Newington wish to retain our services. We have, uh, remaining hours on the existing contract. But, uh, here's where we are. Again, we did, uh, meet with the town and we did another assessment. We will put out another, um, call for requests for grants soon. And that's where we are right now. We are, we're working on post-grant award, uh, administrative tax right now and as well as coming up with grant planning for the following year. So here's, again, a quick snapshot of what happened, our initial grant year, and. Um, this is what we're looking at for next year, examples of requests that have come in. Uh, we have a lot of interest in public safety. Uh, drones, radios, et cetera. Library is interested in public space enhancement. This is just a quick snapshot. There's a lot more requests. And of course, uh, we're looking for money for pool playground equipment. We're going to resend the link requesting updates to gather more information from folks. And that's a quick update of where we've been this year.
Wonderful.
Cool.
That's awesome. Thank you. Um, counselors, do you have any questions or comments for Sonia? Counselor Page?
Um, yes, are, are you, uh, responsible for the, uh, STEEP grants?
I can, I can assist with those. I did not this year, but it's definitely something I can, I prepared for other towns and I am ready to prepare them for Newington as well.
And the only reason I ask, Ms. Richmond, is because I read an article in The Current recently, it may have been in other places, um, that, um, many towns were awarded STEEP grants totaling, I think, about seventy-seven million dollars. And I was just curious, my understanding when I looked at the history was that the town planner, uh, was listed on our website at one point as being responsible for securing those, and I had, didn't see that. And I may have missed it, it may be there. And I wasn't sure if that's still the town planner's responsibility or yours, and whoever's it is, why we don't have any STEEP grants, because seventy-seven million went out to other towns.
We can certainly apply for those. I'm under the direction of the, the town and where I see we're going to be competitive as well. Um, if we have a competitive project that the town would like to pursue, uh, we can, uh, analyze it and see if it's worth, um, putting in a proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mankey?
Yeah, just some feedback. I was with, uh, some of the fire chiefs, uh, actually last night.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, uh, we were, uh, taking photo op for the, the equipment you, you secured through, uh, Firehouse Subs. Um, and I just, one report that they said you were really easy to work with and your company really was, was responsive and, and they gave you most of the credit for, for the grant, so I just wanna give you, give you that feedback that, uh. Uh, so far that. That those are the people, especially that said, you know, it was easy to, to get through this process. I like the idea of, of having a grant writer for the entire town. And, and instead of having each little department try to write their grants and, and not. Have expertise in writing grants, uh, it's, I think it's a, a good investment in our money, um, to have, have your company, uh, do the grant writing for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mankey. Counselor Rada?
Yes, um, I just wanna acknowledge the work that goes into grant writing. It is an art. And, um, I, I know firsthand and not being very successful oftentimes, uh, but thank you so much for the work that, that you've done. Uh, the money that you've brought into the town, um, you know, you, you have a really good eye to look for, to, to. To kind of match up opportunities with our needs and look forward to hearing more good things, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right. Sonia, I wanted to add my thanks too. Um, I was at the event last night also for the, um, Firehouse Subs Grant. Um, the fire department was trying to put together, I think basically, a photo op slash press release as required by, I think, um, part of the, uh, the award. Um, and it was really awesome. One, to hear the great feedback from the, um, fire personnel on the process and working with your company. Um, but just to see the equipment that we were able to secure and the life-saving, um, you know, potential, uh, that you were able to help us get through those grants. Um, I really can't say thank you enough. And when you look at the amount that we are, um, you know, I hate to say it, but contracting you for versus what you're bringing into the town. Um, I don't wanna, you know, say that too much, because I don't want you to raise your prices for us, but, um, but it, you are definitely the best bang for the buck that I've seen in quite some time. Um, and though that's two, over, you know, almost two hundred thousand dollars that we wouldn't have had otherwise, so. Um, and the fact that there's still so much out there pending, we can keep our fingers crossed and hope that deep grant maybe next year will go through or next time around, so. Um, I really can't say thank you enough to you and Nick and for your efforts and working with our town, and I know you had approached us, um, initially, and, and I'm so thankful that you did. And, uh, you know, hopefully this will be a, a relationship that we can continue, moving on. Counselor Nagel?
Uh, yes, I also want to extend not only from the fire department, but other nonprofits, uh, in town, uh, and, and departments in town that, uh. Have been looking for, for monies for, uh, that could be provided by grants or even not being aware of it, providing it to you. They were so excited and so happy that indeed you were. You were available and were willing to do this, and, uh, it has reap rewards, uh, for, uh, other, uh, places, uh, beyond, in town, beyond just fire departments. So thank you once again, and we hope you continue doing the good work.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, as a resident of the town of Newington, I also have a vested interest in bringing money back to the town, and I'm very happy to do that. Uh, and I hope to, uh, now that I've gone through a, a one cycle, I understand more. I've met a lot more people. I have understand, uh, better understanding of what. The needs are, and I can, I think I'll do a better job this year of even finding more matches for the needs that have been identified.
Great.
We do appreciate it.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, folks, next is the introduction of the new assistant town manager. Mr. Chapman, would you like to do the honors?
Yes, I'm very pleased to introduce, uh, Joe Salomo to the council, and you're probably familiar with him. He's been with us for, uh, over a year. Doing facilities management work, and I have to say that in a short time, he and his assistant have been with us. The amount of work that has been accomplished on the buildings is amazing. It really is, and, uh. Uh, you know, he's gonna now take on a new role, uh, and John, his assistant, will take on his old role for a while and see how it all works out, and, uh. You know, uh, Joe comes from many years of experience in municipalities with Portland and he started, as well as owning his own private business. So, uh, I think it's a great choice. He went through the process, uh, initially with, um, outside, uh, interview panel and came in. Uh, in the top five or six, or actually, I guess it was the top, top three, uh, and yes, top three, and then he was interviewed by, uh, the town council. Um, and you scored him and, uh, your ratings as the top candidate, so. Uh, it was pretty easy for me to make the selection and make him, uh, appoint him as the assistant town manager effective, uh, September nineteenth. So Joe is with us. Uh, Joe, you wanna have any comments or offer any thoughts?
I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to the new position and continuing to work with all my colleagues in Newington. It's been a, it's been a great year, and, and I know there's more to come. And I just wanted to offer, um, my opinion on the Sonic Group. I've had the opportunity to work very closely with Sonia on the Kellogg-Eddy Grant. Um, we had many pitfalls along the way, and I definitely could have done it without her. Um, she was phenomenal to work with and, uh, definitely a, worth every penny, as you said, Mayor.
Great. Thank you for that feedback. Joe, congratulations on your appointment. Um, I, you know, just in the short time that, uh, I've gotten to know you and work with you on a few things. Um, I've appreciated your, um, the utmost professional manner that you conduct yourself. Um, I was really pleased to hear about the appointment, and I look forward to working with you moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Other counselors, anyone?
Good job.
All right, we're good. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in late night.
No problem.
All right. Next is the introduction of our chief information officer. Mr. Chapman?
Yes, I'm, I'm pleased to report that, uh, Scott Sharlow is now our information, uh, you know, what's his, what's his type of chief information officer? Replacing Scott, um, that did a wonderful job while he was with us. Uh, Scott comes from, uh, most recently from the town of Bloomfield as their, uh. Um, chief information officer, and he has a pretty, uh, wide array of experience working for a number of agencies, uh, over the years, and, uh, he's been on board now for. Oh, a couple of weeks, I guess, and, uh, from what I understand, talking with his staff, he's, uh, he's made, uh, great inroads in getting, uh, his. A way of, uh, approaching the challenges, uh, and the staff that he has is, uh, receiving it and, and getting right in, on board with him, so. Very pleased that he's here, and Scott, do you wanna say anything?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, uh, come in front of you and introduce myself. Um, I guess the really only comment I'd have is that I'm, I'm just happy to be here. Um, I'm local, per se, and I live in West Hartford, but, you know, I grew up in Connecticut. This is my, uh, my home, so. I'm happy to be able to contribute and make a difference and work with, um, the staff, as Town Manager Chapman mentioned. I've been here now, uh, about a month. And I've, um, met everyone, and I can tell you that it's a really high-functioning staff, and I'm really happy to be here.
Great, thank you. Uh, so, welcome. It's great to have a face with a name, right? Um, and now we know who to bug and contact when our device is not working properly.
He knows us all already.
I contacted John last week, but now I know. Now, now I got your name. Okay. Um, welcome and thank you for, uh, for choosing Newington to be, uh, your place. Um, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and getting to know you better.
It's like Star Trek, having everybody on.
I know, I'm like looking up at the sky too, it's a little weird. All right. Any council commoner questions for Scott?
Welcome aboard.
Yeah.
Thank you. Scott, could you work on holograms so we could put somebody in the seat, pretend, and we could see him in the seat?
Hey, is that, that already is out there.
I know, so then maybe I could get a hologram of me and I could stay home.
All right.
He will be showing me the money.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Exactly. All right, thank you, and thanks for hanging out so late this evening.
Of course. Thank you for having me.
Next item is, uh, that, that's the director of administrative services. Um, we did receive that, I know, under separate cover the other day. I printed it, yep. And, uh, this will be something that we will consider at our next meeting for action. Mr. Chapman, do you wanna mention anything about this?
Yeah, this, this position, uh, was filled for many, many years by Jeff Barron, and he is now, uh, retiring after, I think it's thirty, thirty-four or thirty-five years. Um, and so his, his, his job description, the one that's in your packet, the former one is about thirty-five years old and it's a little outdated. So as, as we do have retirees leaving, we're trying to update all of the job descriptions to better match what needs to be accomplished by these individuals, so. There are some changes to the old job description with the new one, uh, provided to you as well. Um, we're gonna miss Jeff. Uh, he's done a great job. Uh, but certainly serves his retirement, and, uh, I know that he's got a birthday and he's, uh, he's gonna be leaving us in January, so he's given us a. Uh, several months' notice, which is helpful, and we're gonna be recruiting to replace him over the next couple of months, so. Um, the job description is, is more up to date and more appropriate for what we're looking for in the future.
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Mankey?
Uh, just two things. I, Mr. Barron's certainly gonna be missed. I, I deal with him on the, on the insurance committees, uh, and his breadth of knowledge is amazing. Uh, Mr. Chapman, I wonder if you could just, just respond to that. Why is it, one, the old one is grade A six and the new one is grade A nine?
Yeah, the, the old one that, that the grade six was, um, really out of date. Uh, you know, the, Jeff still fit into that, uh. Pay range, uh, but he was at the very high end of it. You know, the, Jeff still fit into that pay range, but he was at the very high end of it. And the job that is now expected to be accomplished is more appropriate to be in the A9 group. So we slotted it there. You know, I will tell you, not only with this position, but virtually all municipal positions now, the, it is very difficult to get new employees. That the competition is very stiff out there. We're, we are really competing with, with many communities. And we're all facing the same thing, whether it be in the police department or administration. There just isn't people applying for these types of jobs anymore. And we need to raise the rewards and compensation up to get the best qualified people in and keep them here. So it was, it was evaluated by the staff and it was determined that it would fit more in the A9 class or grade. So that's what we're proposing.
So it just quantifies the additional duties that, from, from the original one back in the 1800s to this one, it just, there's extra duties and this is quant, sort of quantifies those extra duties, correct?
Yeah, and we're trying to build, we'll say, backup support for various administrative positions where if, if one of our administrators, for whatever reason, is not available, we want to have other administrators that can take on those duties and perform them. So this expands, this, this particular job description expands the role to take on duties that Jeff had not been required to do in, in his career here. But you know, we have to, we have to think about, you know, succession planning and being able to accomplish all the duties because we don't have, and we'll take the case of Jeff Barron right now, he's a one man show. So when and if Jeff were to be on vacation or anything, others have to take on those responsibilities. And we want to make sure that our job descriptions provide for our administrative people to cross train to a certain extent, so we don't skip a beat going forward. And that's what this job description does. All the new job descriptions you'll see are expanding the duties and the role, not on a full-time permanent basis, but when the need arises, we want to have that backup there.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? All right, then we'll move into our next agenda for consideration.
Perfect.
All right, we are on now to written oral communications from the town manager.
I don't have much tonight. I will say that I don't know if you read the article about the success with the police department in trailing on GPS the individual that was on the run. And they traced them through the GPS system on the mapping and it worked as described. It was perfect.
It's amazing.
Very pleased that, knew, and we were the first in the state to have that. And it drew a lot of attention once it was broadcast in the news that this had occurred and had success. So we're very pleased to have this, this operation included now in the police department. All police now in Newington have body cameras. That's new this month. They all must wear them when they're on duty. And we feel that's a good safety feature for our officers. And so that is something that should prove to be very valuable down the road for a multitude of reasons. One thing that I didn't know that I was speaking with the police chief the other day about is I heard one of the other towns in Connecticut were just introducing a program for people that have maybe dementia or difficulty with memory, memory loss and so forth, where the news article that I was reading was talking about another town getting bracelets that can be placed on individuals that may have difficulty remembering where they are or where they're, how to get home and so forth. So in any event, I'm talking with Steve Clark the other day. I was saying that I just heard this, this other town was the first to get this in the state. And he made very clear that no, Newington was one of those. We've had that for several years and I didn't even know about it, so.
I was just looking at Deputy Mayor Badreko, don't we have that? I thought we had that.
We do, but it slipped through the, I know nothing about it. So I was very pleased to hear because it was really impressive what this can do for those that are in need. And all, all that happens is that your loved one fails to be where they're supposed to be and they have memory loss or whatever. They call to the police department, we're going to activate that bracelet and they can immediately find where that individual is, which is pretty impressive. I was very happy. I think that we already have it and I, I just was never made aware of it. So, so I, I just wanted to mention those few things. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions, counselors? Counselor Page?
Just a quick question. Mr. Chapman, can you explain what steep grants are briefly? And is the town planner still applying for those or is that some other person in town who does that?
No, I believe Renata is still involved in it. I can't give you a definition of it. Renata would be able to. But I know that she and Sonia have been in conversation about what Sonia can do and Nick can do for her and getting these grants that may be available to the town. And again, we, this grant writing program was introduced, I guess, what, a year ago to the town? So we, it was a good year of learning for all of us. And all the departments are finding more and more benefit with having Sonia and Nick on board. So I don't have a description of what the grants that are involved in that program include, but I certainly can get a list for you from Sonia or from Renata.
Thank you. And we may be applying for them and just nobody's taking credit for it. I was, when I was reading this article, I was just having a little, I guess they call FOMO, fear of missing out. I thought, and again, maybe we have secured them, but if not, I would just hope that would be one source we would continue to consider and pursue. That's all. And then one other question, which is, can you explain briefly what computer aided dispatching is? And that's something that's on the horizon for us.
The cat system?
Cat system.
We have, we have that.
But are there upgrades coming to that?
There's upgrades in software all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had cat for, I mean, for as long as I know, yeah.
And I can say more when we talk about committees and commissions. Is tonight in the NEMs meeting, they were talking about that. It sounded like, and I may be misunderstanding, that there are anticipated changes or upgrades. And they were just discussing that. And to help them decide when a Newington ambulance is available versus when we need to go to UConn or to Weathersfield or to whatnot, or to the commercial entity. And I wasn't sure if that was something in process or what, so.
We need more information.
That's all good, thanks.
Okay. Counselor Mankey?
Just one quick comment. I just, I've been driving through the center of town recently. I don't know, it seems like everybody goes to the center of town. But I, but I appreciate the fact that the flower pots are out. There are, there are mums in the flower pots. The entire center of town looks brighter and, and more welcoming. The flags that, you know, I appreciate the flags.
There was even a positive Facebook post about it.
No. But I, but I appreciate the fact that the flower pots are out and it makes.
Who do we blame for those?
I don't know, but I love it. It makes the center of town much more vibrant, I think, and much more attractive. And I think it, it does me good when I drive by and see, see plants growing.
Yeah, I agree. I drive up Market Square up and down, you know, on my way to work every day and it really looks lovely.
That's where I see them at the corner there usually, yeah, the flags. It's really nice. Yep. So thank you.
It's also nice to see that we have Pollo Guapo, a new, a new restaurant and business.
I'm ordering tomorrow for lunch. I've already got my girl lined up.
It's so good.
It's so good. I've been going there in Weathersfield for years, yeah. So I went into the Weathersfield store when I found out they're moving and I was like jumping up and down for joy. I said, let us know whatever you need. It's a great restaurant.
Yeah, it's nice to have them in town.
It sure is. All right, anything else, counselors? We're moving on to council liaison committee reports. Oh boy, everybody's got their hands up. Counselor Nagel?
Yes, I have two committees to report on. On yesterday, CROG held a, a meeting via Zoom and in person, if one wished to go to the third floor in Hartford of a, of a building. At any rate, at the meeting, just so you know, the scope of the number of participants from towns and whatever, there were over 47 participants within this organization that were in attendance in one way or another. The guest speaker there was Robert Devlin, the Connecticut Inspector General. And he presented information related to his investigations in relationship to police departments and deaths that occur related to the police. His findings are that the majority of them that, that happen involving suspects or whatever are from natural causes. He also, his department deals with investigations and is particularly concerned about police suicides and why that is happening and how they can help to reduce the even chances that those people who work so hard on police forces for us in Connecticut would even considering doing that and giving them, giving them help. Also, there was, it was announced, it was announced a while ago, but yesterday was announced that there was going to be a social. It's never happened for CROG members. It was at Alverium in New Britain, just over the town line. It was like this afternoon for two hours, I, I did attend. I did not, I had a birch beer. All right, I did not have, so I am sober. And it, it was a good event in terms of town managers and people who, and mayors and so on who are in charge of town to be able to personally once again meet and to have conversations and information about towns that normally you wouldn't have in a formal meeting. And hopefully that'll continue. There are, the chair, the CEO of, of CROG is planning on doing town visits and has yet to come to, to Newington. But he will be requesting, as a matter of fact, we had a long conversation earlier this afternoon. And he will be contacting the town manager at some point to come and visit and possibly come and speak to us about how CROG can help us out in a variety of, of areas that have been mentioned in these council meetings. At the meeting, CROG, it was announced that CROG transportation grants under Staves Streets and Roads have been accepted, that were passed, that were, were applied for throughout the region and said that there is an opening to apply. I wasn't given an exact date for reconnecting communities grants. So perhaps those will be forthcoming and Mr. Chapman will be able to take advantage of that. He gets notes of all these things. I've been reassured. CROG is also starting with basic CERT training sessions to help representatives from CERT to, can go to these sessions that CROG will oversee so they can bring, bring it back to the local community to update and make everyone who is volunteering in that wonderful program to move forth. There were tip projects that were, were approved for various monies having to do with the software within CROG to make it a more functioning organization with the towns in the region, things having to do with homeland security and medical training sessions for all staff and CPR and things of that nature. Financial tip grants were put for bridges in the general area, not specifically in Newington. Transportation parity corridors survey, which has to do with the greater Hartford area and indeed is, we're much concerned about how traffic is going to flow and where it's going to flow if and when the state ever decides to do some major projects that may be forthcoming. And I also attended via Zoom the library board recent meeting. I understand Counselor Braverman was there in person, so she may want to comment on that. It, the, it was two meetings. They also had their annual meeting. At the meeting before the meeting, they reported on leaks that were coming to the library and how they've been prepared and how things are being handled in terms of making the, the library a safe building. Of book sales that have come and will be coming up and possibly having them, small ones on the steps of the library. They're going to be offering training sessions for software and websites. They're going to have the ability to do that again, which they haven't. They hope that they will, can, will have meetings in the future in the community room in the library. They haven't had the ability to do that and had to, recent ones have them here in, in our facility because of software and so on. The third week of Saturday in January of next year, they're going to try to attempt to do what they call the Winterfest Lite. If anybody remembers about the success of Winterfest, but it will be pared down because of the restrictions of COVID and other kinds of things that they have to be aware of, even though time has passed on. They are now planning a promotional booklet and, and other kinds of plans hoping to have us in the, in the forthcoming future consider a library renovation. They originally wanted to look for a, to have this all done and, and us do whatever part we're supposed to do for the referendum this fall. But wise, please, they thought, no, they can never get that accomplished and, and put forth. So that'll be in, in the future. Also mentioned, and this happens quite often, there are positions open on the library board. And one of them is, are spaces that can be filled by both parties. So we're both down one. They're also looking for corporate members, which deals with their selecting with interviews for people who are not from either political party necessarily. Their annual meeting, they went through a, a summary of, of projects that they have done over the year and what they plan on doing. And I understand that in the future, the librarian may be coming forth to us to present that kind of information. So won't share you with that, share that with you. They're going to continue with their race that they have every year and have made, managed to come back and do it. And it will be the 21st of May next year. Many innovative programs, they have been incorporating given COVID and so on. They have a new library app that people may want to contact the library to download that will make the library even more accessible. And also at that meeting, they honored various different people for their contributions to the library. Is there, is there anything I missed, Counselor Braverman?
That was great. That was great. I, I did mention that the more we can get together as a council and library board that, you know, they bring all the groups together because nobody knows each other from any board, really. So I, I mentioned that at the meeting, but they're a real motivated group. And the library is still one of the hearts of our town. And I want to keep it, you know, I don't know how much with COVID, how much the young people have been going to the library, to be honest. I, I don't know if it's been used or not used, but hopefully now that things are back on track, we'll be back to our buzzing library like we've always had. I used to be there three times a week. I mean, every book on reserve.
We'd love to have everybody there three times a week, but there are certain, had been certain restrictions, which we're all unhappy, had to be adhered to, but we're definite. Well, that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Badreko?
Yeah, TPZ has been somewhat active. Something interesting last night, they approved a permit for a gym training sports facility in 14,000 square feet on 3385 Stam Road. And what it, it's like this empty warehouse now. And it's going to be an indoor facility with artificial turf and netting and a full gym and golf simulators. And the focus initially is going to be like Little League. They, they do a lot with Little League, like tryouts and whatever and training. And they're going to have clinics and whatever, but it's also going to be available to the parks around town and individual, different organizations. Because I guess, I mean, it's going to be like really big. So they can have indoor, you know, maybe Soccles or whatever. So that was approved and it'll give some vitality to that part of town by Stam Road, hopefully. Secondly, the town planner asked that we kind of just remind people, because I guess at the last town council meeting, there was, a lot of residents said that they, oh, they, we didn't know. there was a lot of residents said that they, oh, we didn't know that this was going on, or we didn't know that this, you know, like Dakota was being built, you know, whatever. And she just wanted to remind us, and maybe you can put it in the minutes, James, that there is on the TPZ website, a a tab called Current Land Use Applications, and it lists all applications that are given, that the TPZ has received. When it's going to come before TPZ, when it's going to come before Conservation, and when it will be acted upon and, you know, the public hearing. So it's, James, I don't know, HTTPS, www-newingtonconnecticut.gov, two eight four, current land use application, whatever. I'm sure you have that down pat. And the third thing that, which I think is kind, is cool, is that on October third, on October twelfth at six thirty, TPZ, they sent out invitations to all downtown businesses, and they're going to hold a dump, an informa- informal listening session with our downtown business community to understand how they feel about our current zoning regulations in order to kind of like figure out how we can get downtown moving again, what, what the businesses, what makes it easy for them, what is, was difficult for them. So letters went out, I mean, I forget how many, whoever has a business or an office or whatever in downtown, but just going to focus on downtown, and this is for the business community, to better understand how the community feels about the regulations that are currently in place, what may not be working or is not conducive to helping them thrive. So it's, the business community is invited to attend the TPZ on Wednesday, October twelfth at six thirty, but if they're unable to attend, because, you know, some businesses are open, then they're invited to contact the town planner. And the the address was given in this invitation, but the town planner asked if I could just make this known at the town council meeting in case anybody is any business owner or whatever.
That future agenda that she spoke of. So this will list out all the different boards. So of course, TPZ met last night. We've got the zoning board of appeals coming up with an application on October sixth. And then future meetings for TPZ on the twelfth, Conservation Commission on the eighteenth. So you can see all the applications and what they're looking to.
Right, thank you.
James is good, he's like radar.
Renata is putting this stuff out.
Yeah, it's right, it's right. Counselor Page?
Just wanted to give a shout out to Emergency Medical Services. Through the magic of YouTube, I was able to attend quote unquote their meeting tonight at six. And just appreciate their work. They were talking about coordinating with other towns to make sure that their resources are being utilized as efficiently as possible. And just a reminder to all of us, we've got music going, we've got phones going, we've got, we're distracted, just to please pay attention for those lights and sirens so that we're safe and they're safe, and pull over and let them by, like our police, our fire and our other first responders. They put their lives on the line when they go out every time to save us and help us in distress. So thank you very much, Newington Emergency Medical Services for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Counselor Mankey?
Just a couple of quick things. Well, I'm not a liaison, I'm a member of CERT. I just report that they had a recent meeting and they're reorganizing how they manage themselves. I had to leave early, so I didn't get all the reorganization plans, but it's good to mention them, I think. And also mention that we talked about last, last council meeting about the flu clinics, but don't forget those CERT people are there to get people into the clinics and out of the clinics, and they're doing that not only here in Newington, but they're doing it in Weathersfield, Berlin and Rocky Hill. So those people are volunteering to actually leave our town and volunteer for somebody else's so that they can, these things can work. Counselor Rod and I attended a Parks and Rec meeting. We both zoomed in, but a little late because they changed the meeting time. So we didn't seem to catch on to that. But just keep in mind, remember that Parks and Rec is having their annual scarecrow contest again. So if you want to, want to build a scarecrow, here's your chance, or if you have a great, great idea for a scarecrow, contact them and they can help you out. And again, it's not my committee responsibility, but I just would say I was happy to see the waterfall festival back after a two or three year hiatus due to COVID and doing the staffing. I think it was a great event. I think everybody that was there, I was commenting to somebody from the chamber that I see smiles. Everybody was outside and doing something, and it was a good, it was great weather, wasn't too hot, wasn't too cold. It was a great fall day, and I think those things make Newington, Newington. Even though the question is why the waterfall festival is on Market Square and the waterfalls down there, but that's a whole other issue.
We did petition to move the waterfall.
We did say we should move the waterfall. Just a couple of backhoes, we could get it right, moved and through, but.
Just open a fire.
But anyway, it's good to see the waterfall festival back, and I would just compliment the chamber on their efforts to make that happen. The chalk walk was successful. And, and I think the whole thing was a great day for Newington.
It was fun.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on. Let me just make sure we know their hands up here. All right, next is public participation. Any member of the public may participate by raising your hand. If you are in the room, you're welcome to come up. And if you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand in the Zoom application under the participants window or star nine on your phone. And first we have Ms. Rose Lyons.
Hi, Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive. Been an interesting meeting tonight, and once again, affordable housing is being brought up. And I think I heard it mentioned a couple of times about how Anthony Properties would add to our affordable housing dwelling unit numbers. I looked up the numbers on the Department of Housing, and there's thirteen thousand eleven units listed in Newington, and that's of the two thousand and ten census. They haven't even gotten the two thousand twenty census, and according to the Department of Housing, they don't expect to have those figures until twenty twenty. The good news is, is that with the August twenty twenty-two count, we're at eight point nine eight percent, which is probably not new news to some of you, but I think there's a misconception with a lot of people, and maybe it would be probably maybe something at TPZ to mention as well as here, that it would be nice for the citizens to know exactly what qualifies as affordable housing under section eight dash thirty G. I looked into it when there was a discussion about Dakota and a couple of other things, and it's government assisted units, which is, I believe, like Cedar Village and Kellaher Village and things like that, which I would be eligible for as a low income senior. And then there's tenant rental assistance, there's CHA finance, deed restricted, et cetera. And we have one thousand seventy-eight of those units, or actually, I'm sorry, as of August twenty twenty-two, one thousand one sixty-eight. So we're going in the right direction, but once again, I'm going to advocate for the low income seniors like myself, where with some federally funded housing, like New Meadow, right here near the senior center, I would not qualify for because I have an interest, a one eighth interest in my home. So there's things that could be looked into if our people that are doing economic development, I understand that, but maybe you could start looking around to see if there's anyone interested in developing some sort of housing for seniors like myself, and I'm sure that I'm not the only one that's in that situation. I tend to think that people, when they hear affordable housing, they think of section eight. And in my research of it, section eight is not even part of what they consider to be affordable housing. Tenant rental assistance is, and it can only be in a legal rental apartment or home, I believe. So if that's something you could look into, I guess that's the, that'll be my new thing that I'm going to take on, is try and get some more housing for us seniors around here. But thank you very much. It's been an informative meeting and hope to see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Good night, Rose.
Good timing, right on the three minute mark. I was like, perfect. It's like you're an expert at it. Love it. All right. Okay, seeing no other hands up, we'll move on to remarks by councilors. Counselor Nagel?
Just wanted to mention that we cannot forget other things that have happened in town over this past month that haven't previously been mentioned. Most particularly the official opening of the dog park. Another successful event. There have been others. There have been several ribbon cutting events in town, bringing new businesses in. Successful, good looking opportunities for people to come and partake of, be it a restaurants or be it convenience stores or whatever. Don't want to give an unfair plug, each of them is worthy and deserving of being here in town, and we're glad to have them here. So just wanted to add those since we were talking about things that were happening over the last, since the last time we met.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mankey?
Yeah, just, I was told by Counselor Page that it's Counselor Rod's birthday today? And you spent your birthday with us. I speak for the entire council, the mayor, the town clerk, and the audience. We're happy that you decided to spend it with us, because you probably could have other offers, but you spent it with us.
Well, it's my pleasure.
We'll give you tomorrow night off. How's that? Thank you so much.
And you won't say. Yes, and that's the good thing, because that would not get any of us elected.
Happy birthday. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Twenty-nine, right?
Absolutely.
Twenty-nine again.
Again, yep.
All right, Counselor Page?
Just quickly, as a business owner on Market Square, I wanted to say one of the thoughts I have for consideration for the community is, is for example, on Sundays, have Market Square V for pedestrians only, and have invite, work with maybe Parks and Rec, work with vendors, work with people who do music, and have it be a festival atmosphere like Church Street in Burlington, or is it Pearl Street in Hartford? Or other such, one day a week. And, you know, obviously the business owners, other business owners and stakeholders would need to weigh in on this. If people are against it, then it wouldn't happen. But I think that it's a beautiful, perfect opportunity for Market Square, one day a week, maybe on a Sunday, to have that festival kind of atmosphere and do creative things, year round even. Have hot chocolate in January and so forth, decorations. So that was just my two cents on that. Thanks.
Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, Keith, just a quick question. Over on Fen Road, I mean, they were, they were going great guns on the car wash and those four businesses, and all of a sudden, it just seems like everything stopped. Is there a reason, or are they just waiting for something?
Yeah, there are a couple of reasons. The car wash is working with, we met the property district commission, MDC, for water, wastewater, dis- dispersment. I think I just met with the property owners today that are involved in that, and it appears that they've reached an agreement, so that project should get going again. That property, however, has been sold to a, I believe, a national company that owns car washes throughout the whole country. So two things have occurred with the car wash. The other, the retail storefronts, three are already committed to. There's one, I believe, remaining that could be subdivided into two, but I, I think that they're waiting for just one more occupant, if it's the right one, to latch on to the remaining space that's available in that building. The hotel, you'll see some activity starting up probably in the next week or two. They're ready to go. All their paperwork is in, the plans have been submitted, the fees have been paid. So we know they've hired local contractors, so that should be starting up very shortly. And then we have the national welding, so that whole area is very busy, and it's going to continue to be under construction for a while longer, but everything is going along as planned, and the glitch with the car wash has been resolved, from what I understand today. So they should be moving along with no problem.
I mean, I'm just really concerned because I wanted a smoothie, so.
All right. Counselor Camilla?
All right, a couple of things. We had Local Four here, they were looking for some COVID money. And maybe Scott Sores should go to the governor, and he gave that three billion dollars that he balanced the budget with, that was supposed to come to the towns. And we wouldn't have these problems right now, because just like Board of Ed is going to be in a hole next year by about four million dollars, the state's going to be in about three billion dollars because they don't have the revenue coming in. And then I just read a letter that the superintendent of schools just sent out to all the parents saying, she was talking about the asbestos problem, and that she had everything in order, and it was a very serious thing that she's got things in order, while they didn't have things in order for years. And now she's doing it. So she should be very careful with her words, because we know the difference. And then Dr. Calle, I hope you're watching. You're out there handing out flyers about the train stations. Maybe you should put in the flyers who's running for state rep, who's for these train stations, and you can tell them not to vote for them. You know, Turco, Ferrera and Lesser. And, because the other day, Dr. Calle was at Robinson Willard, right in the middle of traffic, handing them out and causing the disturbance. So people need to know that he doesn't have all the information, and it's not us, it's not the town manager. It's these three state reps, well, rep and senator. They're pushing this, because they think they know what's better for Newington. And they don't live here. So I hope you heard me, Dr. Calle. Put the flyers out for these guys not to vote for them. Thank you.
All right, moving on. I don't see any other hands up. We will go on to informational items. The first item in our packet this evening is the two thousand twenty-two Fall Public Shredding Event on Saturday, October eighth, from nine to noon here at Town Hall. And I'm just going to say West Parking Lot, like that's cruel to those of us that are directionally challenged. What does that mean?
Station in the Town Hall.
Town Hall Parking Lot, like the main Town Hall Parking Lot.
Some people think of the Garfield Street Parking Lot as that parking lot. The big parking lot.
I was hoping we could just give latitude longitude.
I mean, at least that I could work into my phone. West Parking Lot, I can't.
Getting some signage for that, so then we'll actually have a real name for it eventually.
Look for the shredders, dude.
This is a really popular event. I know a lot of people ask for this, so spread the word, because I know nowadays, people love to have that opportunity.
Calls for it already, asking when it's going to happen. So we did finally get it together, and do notice at the bottom of it, donations for the human services.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Those are welcome. We do take them all through the entire event. So if anybody wants to drop by with personal care items, gift cards, whatever it may be, we make sure that they are turned over to them on Monday.
Turkeys.
Turkeys, I will, I don't have a freezer, and I'm not quite sure that this is going to fit it.
No.
Money for oil.
Money for oil, there you go.
They can do that as well. We've taken cash and we've taken checks and gift cards.
All right, and then also in our packet this evening, from the Senior and Disabled Center, is a list of their upcoming events and information and highlights from what's going on over there. So that's something for you to review and for the public to take a peek at. All right. Next item this evening is adjournment. I want to turn. Motion made by Counselor.
My computer died a while ago, so.
No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned at ten eleven. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.